19th, 2023. This is the GBOS regular meeting. It is Juneteenth and I'd like to take a moment to honor that this federal holiday and thank you everyone for joining us so far. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:02. I'm Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and Fire Department Supervisor. Sorry, I can't be there in the room tonight. In the room, could we start with Jennifer and then go to her right?
Jennifer Wingard, Land Use Supervisor.
Oh, and co-chair.
Co-chair.
Mike Edgerton, that gives me time to rewind. Mike Edgerton, Housing and Economic Development Supervisor.
Guy Wade, Parks and Rec Cemetery Supervisor.
Thank you. And online, anyone else?
I don't see Amanda yet.
Okay, thank you. And are there any disclosures tonight? And also, we can do these at the agenda item? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to Agenda revisions and approval. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Move to approve tonight's agenda?
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, and I would suggest one revision to the approval. So would I make that my suggested and then make the amendment? I'm seeking clarification.
If you want to describe it, then I'm happy to make the motion to your chairing. That work?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks Kyle and Jennifer. It would be to address number 16, instead of having it in new business, move it to old business as it pertains to tomorrow night's assembly meeting. And it is the resolution we've already written, 2023-58. There's an S version, and we would just clarify that following last week's cemetery meeting.
So I would like, so can I make a motion then that we move item number 16 to old business?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, could we do a vote on the amendment to the agenda, please Kyle?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
That amendment passes 4-0.
Okay, and back to the agenda. Any objections to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to...
Sorry, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Quick question. Are we good on some 12 is? We can discuss that. That's about the alien species and their question for weed spraying. That has changed a little bit, but we don't need to change that on the agenda at this point.
We could announce what the change is so that people can have it in mind. Do you want to go ahead and do that or?
Sure, and you can correct me if you're clear on it.
We can just do this because I was just working on this. Alien species at Land Use presented the use of two different herbicide sprays that they were requesting to use in Girdwood. They've removed the one item that is glyphosate, which is a controversial product, and still looking to spray the other product, which is non-glyphosate. And they're looking just for a one-year approval instead of blanket approval for two years. So we'll address that more comprehensively. And the meeting packet was updated with a slightly modified presentation. And then the materials in the back of the room were also updated, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. And we'll get to that agenda item, probably hopefully not in too long. And now we'll go for meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion to separate May 25th Special Meeting Minutes.
Can I just make point of all, I don't think, I don't think we voted on the agenda.
Okay, I did think I asked for objections, but I didn't hear any, so.
I missed it, sorry.
Sure. Are there any objections to the agenda as presented? Okay, hearing none. Then we have lots of meeting minutes to approve. We could do those all together. I just saw one little typo on May 25th Special Meeting Minutes. So if anyone would like to make a motion?
Can we, can we excise, deal with May 25th first and then maybe the rest together? So I have a comment on May 25th, page 2, first full paragraph. I think there's a couple of words missed. There's no response to come from DOT regarding Glacier Valley proposal. Mike Edgerton suggests that meeting with Glacier Valley. And I think that's probably would be a good idea or something. But it's just a couple of words missing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, so we just need the grammatical fix there of a couple of words missing to complete that sentence. Does that make sense, Margaret?
Yep.
Okay. Any oppositions to that sentence? Okay, and then when we were discussing on May 25th Special Meeting, the titles of each supervisor role, Parks and Rec and Cemetery need to be together. And that was the only correction that needs to be added to those minutes in my review. And I know we did talk about it a couple of ways during the meeting, but the way the minutes read needs to be Parks and Rec and Cemetery. If anyone would like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, guys, you can make the motion and if anyone would like to second it.
I can make a motion, Parks and Rec and Cemetery are fallen to the same supervisor.
Thanks, Guy. Good second. Thanks, Jennifer. Anything further on that? Okay, we'll go for a sent on these edits on the 25th unless anyone else has anything else to add.
I have a question.
Okay.
Did we, are some of these others put together, like Stubbs and Maintenance Utilities and?
Maybe it was just listing.
Yeah, I think it was. Go ahead, Margaret.
I think that at the bottom of the page, it says group discusses various options determining roles that can be categorized together. And so there was a list, but then at the bottom, it's combined.
You can see it up here. There's a show right there.
And yeah, I've already updated this version that's online in revised minutes.
So the only thing is moving Cemetery to Parks and Rec on that one?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Guy. Thanks, Margaret, for explaining. Any objections to those edits for the 25th? Okay, I'll go by assent then for approving those minutes. And then, Mike, you can go back to your idea.
Can I move that we accept the minutes or we approve the minutes of May 15th meeting? May 15th Special Meeting, June the 1st Special Meeting, and June 6th Special Meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anything further discussion? Okay, we'll go by assent. Any objections? Hearing none, all those meetings are, minutes are approved, so thank you. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged to help discussions stay productive. Please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. For introductions, presentations, and reports tonight, we'll start with number one legislative report. Any of these representatives online tonight? Senator Geisel?
Senator Geisel's here in the room.
Senator Geisel.
Oh, wow.
If you'd like to go to the...
What a treat. Thank you.
That one right there, yes.
This one works. Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks. It's good to be here. Nice drive. Anyway. Yeah, so the legislature is adjourned. As you know, the Senate where I serve has bipartisan coalition. I'm the majority leader, and we had a great session. People asked me how did it go? It went great. We had great collaboration in our caucus and immediately identified the two main goals. Increased education funding, which has fallen well behind inflation. And the second one is to reestablish a defined benefit pension to, to be able to recruit and retain a state workforce to get the job done. We also submitted a balanced budget to the governor. In fact, it had $34 million in surplus, assuming a $73 a barrel oil price for the coming year, beginning July 1. It's running about 77, 76, 77 right now. So I think we'll be able to achieve that, but we'll see. We also put in the budget, managed to achieve a reasonable dividend. And so that will be approximately $1,300 for every Alaskan. And just a nice data point, sometimes it's helpful for folks. Every $1,000 in dividend costs $650 million from the earnings reserve. So just a way of thinking about the dividend. It's not $1,300, it's actually about $800 million. So, so anyway, we had those accomplishments. And like I said, it was a great session. We did originally have an $84 million surplus in the budget, but the last days negotiations with the House Majority, we actually gave up some of that surplus so they could add some things in, some capital items in. Today, the governor vetoed. And so I think a lot of you have heard many of these vetoes. Probably the biggest one that I'm hearing people upset about is the 50% cut to the education funding. So instead of increasing the BSA as was needed, $680 per student, it's only going to be 300, excuse me, 680 million. It's only going to be 340 million. That's really going to impact the Kenai Peninsula, the Matt Sue Borough, of course, Anchorage as well. But those two particular school districts really needed that increase. But some of the other things that he vetoed were things like public radio, took a little hit childcare. The grants that we provided in the budget, that's $7.5 million. He left alone. But there was other funding for childcare incentives of, let's see, that was $500,000, and he cut that to 250. I mean, we had had a surplus. I don't know why he did that. Originally, what was really needed for childcare grants was 15 million. But again, the House Majority didn't like funding it that much, so we agreed to cut it. But, and he left that alone, so thankfully. He did make cuts to the university. The University of Alaska Anchorage got a cut of 19.3 million. University of Alaska Fairbanks, 13 million. University Southeast, 2.9. And the Crisis Now services. So Crisis Now is a mental health program where instead of a police officer responding to a mental health crisis that they encounter, they actually call clinicians who know how to ramp down, deescalate a situation. That's the Crisis Now team. He reduced that amount by $500,000. So, so that was disappointing. Brianna, I think it was Brianna actually asked me about one of the appropriations, and that was for the purchase and establishment of the Eagle River Cemetery. Well, it turns out he vetoed that. So, but money had been appropriated for that, 1.5 million, actually. And so I know Girdwood has been looking at a cemetery. The governor did end up vetoing that. The other thing we passed during session was a carbon offset program. So this allows, this allows the state to begin to process our state forests and look at how much carbon those trees can sequester, absorb, right? Carbon is plant food, and our trees are always absorbing it. And we could sell that as credits. So the bill we passed allows the state to begin assessing the trees and determining the value. There is another bill, carbon sequestration, that would use the pore spaces out in Cook Inlet that we've pulled gas and oil out of. And being able to actually capture the carbon from the air and sequester it underground. That was a more complicated bill. That will proceed next session with more discussion and refinement. So that's pretty much what we did. There was an elections law bill that also made it through the Senate, is stuck in the House. Actually, we didn't get it through the Senate because we knew the House wasn't going to deal with it, so we're still holding that. But it clarifies things like getting the right choice of voting results out sooner rather than awaiting the whole 15 days, clarifying residency requirements, putting postage on the absentee ballot envelope so the state pays the postage, repealing the witness signature on the absentee ballots also. That's kind of an absurd requirement that a lot of people have been wanting to get rid of. You can't, you can't confirm those witness signatures. They're silly. So anyway, that's in the election bill that is still underway. So that's about it. Happy to take any questions.
You have a question?
Thank you so much, Senator Geisel. And since I'm not there, obviously the board members that are, if you could, between you, just go ahead. If you have any.
Was ballot curing, you might have mentioned it, was ballot curing part of the, part of the bill that eventually passed?
A little louder, Mike, I can't...
Sorry, ballot curing, was that part of the election?
Was ballot curing, we talked a lot about that.
Yeah, I just don't remember if it made it to the final.
I don't think it's in there either. I don't think it's in there, but that is something that needs to be done. That ability for folks to cure their ballot, yeah, if they win the error.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, anyone in the room, please come to the microphone if you have a question?
Hi, this is Anne Kaiser. I have a question on the trees, the carbon sequestration, the goal of that program is?
The governor would like to have a new revenue stream, and so this is potentially one of them. He originally forecasted that it would bring in billions, but actually, we're probably expecting maybe 90 million, significantly less. The credits simply don't sell for that much now. They did originally. There's only a couple of states doing it right now. Michigan is one, and I can't remember the second one.
You know, it's something that I'm interested in because of our global warming situation. And I know Alaska has a very large portion of the United States as, because we have all these huge areas that are sequestering carbon. I think it's the biggest one in the country, isn't it, Alaska?
Our land is certainly, remember our state forests are the only ones that we could use.
Okay, search it for it.
Yes. Much smaller.
Okay, that's what I was... Okay. Sure. I want to find out a little bit.
Sure, thank you. Sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Brianna, your mic is off.
Oh, I nicely thanked her, sorry. And asked if Randy Salt was available online or Zach Johnson? Thought I saw one of them.
Yeah, Randy's here. Let me just get my camera going, be working here. So just a couple for everyone. Obviously, we have a meeting tomorrow night. So some of the items that are coming up. We'll have the 2023-60, that's the Port of Alaska Basins of Design concept. So we'll essentially approve the design for the port. There's a little bit of going back and forth about what that design should be. So we have Matson and Tote are the two shipping companies that come up here. One uses containers, which is Matson, and then Tote use a roll-on, roll-off. And what we're looking is basically designing a port, although I think it's going to be a little more expensive for us, but a port that complies with international standards and has flexibility to basically do roll-on, roll-off, or tote at either of the two berths at the port. Other designs we're looking at specialize in one port, one berth or the other, in which case if something happens, we'd be limited on how we could ship things in. So no time, like when you're going to rebuild the port to make those kind of design changes. Next piece will just be trying to minimize the cost of the port and looking at how best to do that. We'll also be voting on the tariff. There's, and I'll say we should be voting on it. There's also rumblings, scrumblings that we may pause and postpone this till Meg's hotel's back because she's done a lot of work with the port. We're also going to have 2023-70, which is an ordinance defining the requirements for allowed camp. So where we would allow camping for homeless. Right now, there's really only one allowed camp, and that's Third and Ingra. The other one that's kind of gotten established is the old archive site, which is behind Lowe's on Midtown next to Cuddy Park. Let's see, we'll also have 2023-67. That's originally designed to repeal the scoff law. However, after the work session, I think everyone's kind of against repealing it and really would like to go back through it and change it. And for those of you that don't know what the scoff law is, essentially, if you rack up violations totaling over $1,000, if you have another violation and are stopped by the Traffic Department of APD, they could seize your car. So interesting piece, and one of the pieces that we want to change is if you lend your car to someone who's on the scoff law list and they get pulled over, APD can seize your car even though you are not on the list. So just trying to make it a little fairer, a little more equitable. I think everyone agreed it, even the police chief agreed there's some changes that need to be made. And then not on the list this time, but something to be watching out for, and I'm still diving into it, is 2023-66. And what that's going to do is change Anchorage planning zones from, I believe, 15 down to. And Girdwood would be affected by this as well. And really, it comes down to the two different types of planning zones are, as I'll describe it, those with utilities and those without basically meaning water and septic. So a lot of the emails and concerns I've been getting is if you go to two zoning districts, it could be possible to have an apartment building put next to a residential, a house, a single-family home. I think some areas of town, that's great. I think everyone likes it. Obviously, Hillside and other areas that are on septic are concerned about overloading septic systems and water tables. So I look forward to having a work session on that one and more debate on that one. Let's see, we'll also have 2023-182, and that's bringing up the Navigation Center on Tudor and Elmore. I don't think it'll, I don't think it'll pass. It might get postponed as well. I believe the price tag, going from memory, I think it was $11 million for finish that project and operate it, I think through Q1, if memory serves me right. But we don't have the money. We don't have the funds. I think we could, if we, you know, dug into the couch and shook our pockets out, we might come up with $6 million. So the concern is really what we'll do with our homeless come winter when we have to have a cold weather emergency sheltering plan. And I think right now we're relying on the landlord program for apartments as well as nonprofits to step up into that space. I think we might get some pallet shelters possibly at some point as sort of an experiment. Think of a pallet shelter, that's a horrible name, they're not pallets, but as a very small apartment, no water, just heat, say eight by eight by 10, I believe. And it's kind of in lieu of an apartment building, in lieu of a hotel room, and kind of that last step on your way back in society for being homeless. So I'll stop there and open up for any questions.
Thank you. Go ahead in the room if any board members have.
Yeah, so this is Guy Wade. I have a question about the port design. Do you have a cost estimate for what that changed for, changed both those docks to roll and roll off?
I do, but not in front of me. And really, the design change that you're speaking of is tote is roll-on, roll-off, so they need ramps. Those ramps can be moved pretty much anywhere along the port. Matson uses the ISOs or IMO containers, or you want to call them. And one of the changes is to extend the crane, the tracks, the railroad tracks, the length of the port as well as upgrade to the next size of crane to kind of match what's, what the industry's going to. As this, this will have a, you know, hopefully longer than a 50-year lifespan.
When you vote on it tomorrow, will there be some kind of cost estimate at that time?
We've, we've, we've had several, I've actually had recently in the past two weeks, two six-hour work sessions on this. And again, I don't think we'll vote on it tomorrow night. Rumor is it's going to get postponed until Meg gets back. But I can, I could dig that up and let you know what that is, Guy.
Sure, I could just keep tracking it. But yeah, it was just, yeah, if it's not voted on tomorrow, it'd be interesting to know. Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Or in the room? Okay, I don't hear or see any. Mr. Salt, thank you so much for being here.
Thanks.
All right, I'll move on to Anchorage School Board. I don't see Andy online. And I did not receive an email update from him. So I'm guessing he's not available tonight. Move to number two, Supervisor Reports and Introduction of New GBOS Roles. We did have our annual option to switch roles, and quite a few of us did. So I'll start. My new role is Fire Department, and I am co-chair for another year. Jennifer, could you go ahead?
Sure. I ended up as co-chair as well and Land Use Community Supervisor.
Yeah, I said last year that I'd do co-chair for one more year, so I did it for one more year. And I am now supervisor for Housing and Economic Development.
Yeah, I am Fire Department last year, or last year and a half, and moved over to Parks and Rec and Cemetery and enjoying it so far. It's been really good.
Thank you, Guy. And Amanda Sassy is Roads and Utilities. And we'll go to number three. Unless staff has anything, please feel free to interrupt. The addition here is update from committees. So this is a chance for the chairs of any of these committees in order to give a three-minute or less update. And questions can be referred to the minutes of these meetings or the chairs. So this is not supposed to take up a measurable amount of time, just an update. Is anyone here from Trails Committee?
I'm here for Trails, from the committee members, you mean?
Margaret, would you like to clarify?
I think since in the Supervisor Reports, you guys mostly just ran through your new roles, this would be an okay time for supervisors to offer what they think is important or highest on the list coming from the committees. But the intent is to make sure that the committee chairs have an opportunity to bring forward whatever they think as well.
All right. I'm actually for Parks, Kyle has it really well outlined in his report later, so.
Yes, the Trail Report in the, in our packet here is very thorough, so we can refer to that. Land Use Committee Chair?
So, right, so this is Jennifer Wingard. And actually, the items that were most discussed at Land Use, we are discussing tonight. In particular, though, I'm just reiterating what Margaret said earlier about the invasive species request that has been fairly fundamentally changed based on the feedback. the feedback from land use. And so that feedback, uh, has changed the request.
Thank you. Anyone from Public Safety Advisory Committee?
Uh, no, but we will definitely have both chiefs that give updates on those here shortly.
Thanks, Kyle. Uh, Cemetery? I don't see Tommy. Okay, we'll discuss that and the agenda and Housing and Economic Committee. The chair from there here.
Uh, yeah, Brett Wilbanks, I'm here. Um, we did have our first meeting. Um, and we have a link on the main, uh, GBOS page, uh, for our meeting announcements and materials. Um, and Agenda, which should be out soon for, uh, our next meeting. We're going to be meeting, um, monthly last Wednesday of the month at noon to see how, uh, that works out for the group. Um, we had just, uh, gotten through our introductions. It's an impressive amount of experience and I look forward to, uh, you know, the discussions that we're going to have and would encourage others with ideas on that to, um, you know, participate as possible. Um, so I'm really looking forward to this Wednesday to start putting out some, I guess, uh, tools so that we can start getting into the meat and the details here. That's the latest. See you Wednesday.
Thank you, Brett. Anything else? Okay, we'll move to number four, which is Service Provider Reports with five minutes. Is Chief Weston there?
Hi there, Sean Weston, fire chief. Um, for my report, I wanted to mention that we had an impressive 41 loads of brush dropped off Friday night and Saturday morning at the Woodlot. Uh, it's going to be open, uh, Tuesday night and Wednesday, uh, 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. So if you have brush to drop off, it will be free this year and so you can drop it off. And then we're going to look at scheduling some additional times. Uh, we've had 201 calls so far this year. Uh, the big exciting news is we are standing up our UAS operation or drone support operation uh, that can help us on search and rescue and those people that are on the title plots, uh, so we can go and talk to them or at least see where they are versus look at the binoculars. So, uh, so Alaska Railroad came down, uh, last Tuesday and gave us an all-day training, uh, using their, uh, drones. And so super happy about that. And then our policies are in, uh, in accordance with FAA. We've also looked at what APD was using to make sure that we are following an appropriate fire service, uh, policy for drone operations. And I know that I've got a couple of things on the agenda, so that's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Weston.
I could bring the drone to the meeting. Yeah, I brought, I brought. I could, I could. Yes, definitely. Maybe when we've had a little bit more training and flying, but yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll discuss further in the agenda. Uh, Chief Ashay for Police Update Report?
Hey, yeah, good evening. This is Andres Shea, Whittier Police Department. Uh, basically we're gearing up for a forest fair coming up, uh, the weekend of the eighth. We, uh, have staffing as usual, probably going to be about two officers, uh, per shift overlapping in the mid-hours and, uh, two officers into the early morning hours throughout the weekend, uh, probably ending around, uh, 6 o'clock, 5, 6 o'clock on Sunday evening. Um, with that, um, like I said, we're going to have all our staff on duty during that time for the overlapping coverage. Some other, uh, some other areas, I addressed it to the Public Safety Advisory Committee during a Memorial Day weekend or the two-week period. Uh, Whittier Police received a traffic safety grant through Click and Ticket through the State of Alaska Department Transportation. Uh, we did roughly 123 traffic stops from Alyeska Highway, Stewart Highway, as well as Portage Highway. About half the stops resulted in citations for speeding. Um, we're going to continue, uh, working with, uh, Click and Ticket throughout those holiday seasons uh, to do, uh, more traffic enforcement on the Alaska highways between Whittier and Girdwood. And that's pretty much about it unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Or Chief Ashay? Okay, I don't see or hear any. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, Kyle, you're up with Roads and Parks and Rec if no one else is right there.
Sure. Camera? Uh, yes, uh, I said I keep it brief. Uh, we've had quite a bit of, uh, different projects going on over the last month and we are in great gratitude for our volunteers who've come out and helped us with it. We had a large trail project, um, work night and, uh, we're kicking off Tuesday night, trail projects throughout the summer, um, working around holidays and things like that. And we do appreciate our partnership with, uh, Friends of the Girdwood Trails who's helping to organize, um, a lot of those work events. So be looking for that information as the summer goes on. Um, as always, our volunteers have been helpful in other areas of the park. We just recently had a Boy Scout crew, crew that rode their bikes here in the camp and then they moved a bunch of woodchips in tent campground over the weekend. Um, so we appreciate their volunteer efforts out there. So, um, and then tomorrow we start building a skate ramp with volunteers. So we'll be, uh, continuing to work through lots of projects go out there. Our care park caretakers, John and Luke have been doing a great job tackling a lot of the jobs um, that we go through every year with spring startup and then just, uh, standard maintenance through all our park and trail facilities um, out there. And then we had a, we had Alaska Trails, um, with two different work groups here with us uh, for two weeks and they did a ton of work on the Beaver Pond, um, out there and, uh, helped us with a bunch of drainage, um, avalanche damage repair from several years ago, um, and, and other items. So we appreciate all the efforts that they put in out there. Uh, it was their first hitch of the season. It was nice to have them here and eager and ready to go, uh, in that aspect. Um, several items here in the report today we'll be talking about. Uh, just want to give an update on the, um, new suspension bridge, uh, development. Uh, we're, uh, uh, into full development phase now of planning. Uh, we've been meeting with the planning team. Uh, survey team has been out on site. Uh, GeoTech will be out there shortly. Um, and our design team is meeting, uh, bi-weekly with our partner at the U.S. Forest Service, um, and the project management team to, uh, move that design along. So we hope by August we'll present a 35% plan to the community, uh, through the Girdwood Trails Committee. Um, and, um, uh, show what we've come up with. Um, um, so, but things are going along really well. So we're, we're pleased with the progress on that at this point in time. Um, as always, uh, our websites are always kept up and social media is kept up to date by Margaret, uh, and, and the great work she does there. Uh, switching over to roads, uh, it was a late spring, so everything was pushed back. Uh, I ideally, uh, we like to do things about three weeks earlier, but due to the breakup and the slow spring, um, we got everything completed at the last part of May, um, into June and then it's been raining. Um, and so there's definitely going to be some tough trip work when we have a larger period of dryness that we need to do out there. We'll be applying some calcium, uh, to control the dust. Um, uh, as it comes up, like in the first section of Timberline. Um, but we, it looks like we're going to hit another wet spill here for a few days, so we'll just see how that goes. But, um, we're also preparing for several large projects, uh, one of them being the new fish culvert. They'll be installed on Moose Meadow Creek at Lake Tahoe Road. Um, and so we're getting ready for that to start in mid-July. Uh, that will require the lowering of the water line, so it's going to be a larger, larger and longer, longer project than normal, uh, that we'll be tackling there. Um, and then following that, we'll be going into several small projects throughout town, uh, with the crew on a focused effort, uh, there. Expenses wise, uh, we haven't received an invoice yet for May from Western Construction, um, but that should be coming in soon. But, uh, so far this year, uh, we've only spent 172,000 with the, uh, contractor, uh, but for that is that we had a lighter spring, um, with it being so slow on melt, so we didn't get to a lot of work until May. And now we're moving into construction season. We're trying to preserve, uh, money for the larger projects. So we have to do it here in July and August. So, uh, there will be larger expenses through the middle of the summer here as we, uh, deal with that. Uh, overall, all budgets for parks, police, fire, um, and roads are right where they need to be at this time of year. Um, so, uh, well within our, our budget for the first half of this year, of this fiscal year. That's all I got.
Thanks, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle?
Yeah, I've got one on the bridge panel. Um, could you explain again the relationship between, um, how we work with the partners in the Forest Service? I saw a public notice from the Forest Service about the bridge, which honestly read as if it was entirely their project on their land. They're completely dealing with it. No acknowledgement of anybody else. And I just wondered, uh, how the, what the relationship is between the project. It's newly launched, it's not.
Correct. So, um, the way the hand tram is right now, um, there is an easement that leads to each side of the hand tram. That's maintained by the U.S. Forest Service. The easement is through Parrish Land Bank, um, but it, uh, uh, Winter Creek Trail is their responsibility um, for management and construction. Um, when they get to the hand tram, that falls back to the municipality of Anchorage, uh, in that aspect. And so, um, it, with this project, the goal is, is to reconnect that connection between the two bridges, which I know is separated by the canyon, and, uh, turn that bridge over to the U.S. Forest Service in perpetuity for their management. Um, and so through this partnership, we're working through that. So I'd love to see that notice. I have not seen that, um, notice. But, um, we've been working out an agreement, um, that will be, uh, signed that says we will help you build it, you will take it over, um, type of agreement with the U.S. Forest Service at this time.
Is it we will help them build it or is it we will build it and hand it over?
Well, we will build it, um, but they are going to be right there in step with us as going through it. So we're building a bridge that they want to accept. So we've got in actual professional design firm from, called Morrison Merrily at the recommendation of the U.S. Forest Service that builds suspension bridges for 48 on National Forest Land. So we're using them. And then at every meeting, the head engineer from this region is at that meeting. And so all the questions are asked, the bull, myself, my project management team, him and, and our consultant. And we figure out the final design that way.
Got it. So the intent is to have something that meets Forest Service standard. Although we're building it, it's going to end up hopefully as a Forest Service.
Correct. And we just had a meeting on Friday with the National Forest Service or National Forest Foundation. And they're very interested in partnering with this. Um, and so we're actually looking at ways that they can maybe put funds towards this project.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else? Thanks, Kyle. I'll move to public comment. Public persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone ready for public comment? I don't see any hands. Is there anyone in the room? Okay, we'll go right into old business on number five. Review of remaining Holton Hills questions, Land Use Supervisor. Uh, I'll let either of you, uh, Jennifer or Mike, read out what you will just update, review.
I can do that. Um, but this is, uh, partly caught by Margaret, actually, um, that we had from our letter to HLB, we just have some questions that are still outstanding. Well, in particular, we're still missing a copy of the formal bifurcation agreement and the less redacted area map that we asked for. And then the other issue that's still outstanding is a response from Lance Wilbur in planning, um, that about, uh, that the CC, that the Crow Creek neighborhood land use plan would not be used as our area master plan for development purposes, and we don't have a response to that request. Uh, so one suggestion would be to add that to the agenda for when we need, we have our meeting with MOA and bring it up that, uh, we could also, I suppose, um, ought to act on it now, but that meeting is scheduled for next month anyway, or sorry, it'll be next month, right? It's, it is scheduled. It's scheduled. Okay, yes.
I'll give an update to this because I knew, I, I looked at this and pissed and to, and getting ready for this meeting. And, uh, I reached out to, uh, the HLB staff. And I guess there is a newer director that is going to be appointed to the position. Um, and so I have not got confirmation from Lance about this, so I'd like to talk with him on tomorrow. Um, today, or the city was off for observing the holiday. Um, so I'll confirm it with him tomorrow. If that's the case, I think it's, Jennifer, it'd be good to put you in touch with that new director and maybe address these questions and, and have her, um, maybe get us answers back to this.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Kyle. Anything further about number five?
Only I'd like to ask, do, is the name of the new director being announced? I haven't heard anything.
I just, I just heard it through unofficial, so I make sure that I get the official that this is true.
I haven't heard, I haven't seen it.
Because I know a lot of people are going to ask questions. I don't want to harm the person.
Thank you. Anything else? I'll move to number six, Agenda Item LUC 2201-06, Girdwood Industrial Park Concerns. Power, palletting, and others. Current or past land use supervisor?
I'll take this one. Um, so I actually was thinking of, um, having a resolution ready for us to act on tonight. However, when I went through it and drafting the items, I realized that, uh, it obviously has a lot of overlap with our comments to, uh, on the HLB one-year and five-year plan and probably depends on how they change the, or whether they change the one-year and five-year plan, uh, to reflect our concerns. So I think what I, what I'm going to suggest is we, um, have a resolution next month in front of us that responds to, um, the one or five-year plan as presumably it will be going to the assembly at that point. Um, one other comment, I look back, gee, it might even be, it might even be worth bringing this up on the screen. Um, but we have a resolution from 2018, 2018-03. And it's kind of interest just over five years ago. We passed it in January 2018. And it's very interesting reading through that and basically our concerns are the same, but a bit, bit more so than they were five years ago. So there's been pretty much no activity in those five years. That was just before the, um, uh, the Phase One work was completed. I think Phase One work was scheduled to be completed that summer. Um, and we asked for acceleration of Phase Two and Phase Three, and obviously it's over five years later and there's been no movement on that.
Sorry, Mike, could you, could you repeat the document that you're referring to?
The document is, uh, Resolution 2018-03, which is dated January, um, 2018, just over five years ago. And, uh, we expressed our, our concerns, how urgent it was that the Phase Two and Phase Three of the industrial park was scheduled and acted upon. And I said it's five years later and we're basically in the same position, except we probably have more concerns now than we did then. It's just one blind, really there's been no activity in the last five years.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Kyle.
Internally, we're working on the power, uh, being brought to the Girdwood Board, Girdwood Service Area Road Maintenance Lot. And so we should actually have a design here, um, in the next two weeks. Um, and we'll be bringing that to the board, uh, in July, uh, to talk about funding to put those that power into the industrial lot for our bull rail to power our equipment during the winter months. So, um, so yeah, well, at least internally, we're working through that issue for that, that lot alone.
Thank you, Kyle. Go ahead, Mike.
One other comment, if any, any other supervisor would like to work with me on a, um, resolution for next month. I think we two of us can do it. If anyone volunteers or would like to earn an hour later. Great.
I'll, I'll do that.
That makes sense.
Okay, Jennifer's on it for Girdwood Industrial Park. So we'll look forward to that next month or slash next meeting. And, uh, I forgot what else I was going to say on that, but it's, Kyle pulled it up online for anyone who is, uh, online tonight to see that. 2018 resolution. Thank you, Mike. Anything else on number six? Okay, we'll go to number seven, Timberline Road Improvements to Alpena and Vale-Loveland Intersection.
Uh, I'll take this one. And, uh, what we are proposing tonight for funding is a a conceptual design report will get us to a 35% design on, um, improving and paving the first section of Timberline Road from the church, um, down to Alpine, Alpena, and then up to Loveland on Vale. Um, it's the most notorious section of Timberline that potholes the quickest, um, carries the most traffic. Um, and, uh, it's probably the most expensive to maintain within the service area um, due to the fact, the amount of traffic that goes through that splits there into subdivision, either heading up Timberline or up into Vale. either heading up Timberline or up into Vale into the upper portion of the subdivision there. So what we, this proposal in front of you from the Pate Company would do is survey and mapping of the area. And then followed by a geotechnical investigation to find out what material it is underneath the road there. Because that plays a huge factor in building a new road base. If we were to pave it, you want a solid base so that that pavement doesn't move. And then a conceptual design report, which would be 35% design. And it would go through all the different requirements of doing it. A large issue with this area is the amount of utilities in that section from water keys to sewer mains to telecom and natural gas, identifying where those are and how it plays into the road prism. And then bringing the utilities to the surface with water keys and manholes would play a big factor in that area. The other aspect of this would be also look at traffic calming, which may be speed bumps in this area, looking at those things. And then what design the road would be. Most likely, the road would narrow to 12-foot lanes, which would allow larger shoulders for pedestrians in those areas. And then keep the traffic, traffic calming would naturally happen with a tighter lane through there. So all those areas would be looked at as that's, we've heard feedback about improvements for this area, let alone hopefully resolving the dust and different potholing that goes on there with different weather events that we get here. So, so in total, you can see here where the cost would be. We're asking for the board supervisors tonight to approve no more than $37,000, which would come from our capital account to fund this. In the end, I do think the study would be good because it will give you a good sense of what it costs per linear foot to really do projects like this in Gerwood on our gravel roads. And then for the future planning aspect of improving those roads. Take questions.
Thanks, Kyle. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So this would be designed, assuming phone code for collector road standards. So that's at least one separate paved roadway with the ditching and all the other things that were required.
Correct. But in, it's really, Timberline is classified as collector standard. And it meets the collector standard requirements. And so that would be part of this and how it flushes out and what traffic would want in it. Many service areas pave their roads. It's to our benefit that we put in proper, we're pave it for, for the benefit of preserving and easier maintenance for the long run in that aspect. So those things would be analyzed, realizing that service areas have a much more limited budget than the Anchorage Bowl, which has a larger bonding tax base to work with. And they can do things on a grander scale. So, so those factors would be worked out. You definitely work through traffic department to resolve what the minimums are and where we can go from there.
Do you know what the current width of the road is? I mean, from ditch to ditch.
I think we have 60-foot right of way through there. Could be, could be bigger, but that's what survey would help.
Right. And I think 60-foot is the width for a collector, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. But the current road is probably not 60 feet.
No, I mean, we've tried to open up the shoulders to get the water off to the dish line. So in areas, it's probably at 60 feet. Just trying to get the grass off so that water gets off. But no, not fully developed out. Easy way to tell is most of the pedestals for telecoms are pretty close to right for right of ways. So when you drive down the road and you look at a pedestal, you can tell where the right of ways are in the roads.
But the road, the current road is actually within the right of ways. I don't think that's always the case in Gerwood.
No.
But in that section it is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Are there any further questions from the board?
Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, so NTP is going to take 90 days for him to produce this report, is that? Do I understand their proposal? And so, but has Geotech been done? It sounds like another company is going to do it, somebody under term contract.
Correct.
Is that going to be an issue or is that, or is that him planning right now?
We have not done anything because we don't have, we haven't given them a notice of receipt. So they just talked with them in concept and, and they would have to, if we give a notice of receipt, they would have to approve it and then get it scheduled to go forward. The Geotech would be done by Shannon Wilson. And the actual person who would be doing it is a local resident that's lived here for about 25 years.
I don't live on that section of Timberland.
No. They live in outer main roads.
Brianna?
Yes.
Speaking of that, I'm, I should just disclose that I do live on that section of Timberline and Vale. And I don't know if that adds into a conflict of interest.
Okay, well, before I ask for the will of the body, we could go into the questions for you. If you feel. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the question is, does Jennifer have a substantial private interest, including a financial or personal interest in the matter to be described before us? So we like to split up the question of financial or personal interest.
Right.
Do you feel it's financial or personal?
So this particular vote is just on the study. This is for studying the project, not, this is not a vote on the project itself, right?
We would only be coming up with a concept.
A cover, right.
If we went to construction, that'd be a whole different.
So no, I don't have any, there's no financial interest. It would only be, obviously, this project will affect us personally.
Personal interest. And when you say us, you hold the interest with anyone in your household?
Yes, right. Sorry, my family, right.
Sure. And I'm reading off the new card, so board members are aware. And the next question is, when did the interest arise? So just to show how long that interest was or would be in the future.
So we've, we've been on, we've been, we've lived there for 20 years. 20 something years. And so the road has been a factor in living there consistently during that time.
And I'll. How does this matter before the body impacts the interest? Specifically, is the interest a substantial part of the matter under consideration?
My feeling is that until this study is done, I'm not going to know how much this project is going to affect, would, would affect us personally. So I think my answer to this is, I don't know the answer to that until this study is done.
Fair. And that plays into the next one. Does the impact on the interest directly vary with the outcome of the official action?
No. I think so.
And is the impact on the interest immediate or conjectural and dependent on factors?
Sorry, wait. The impact on the interest directly vary with the outcome of the official action? No, this, this action is only the study. It's not, so anyway, yes, no. And so the next question, sorry, impact. It is conjectural. Because we don't know the answers on this. Okay, and depending on fact, yes, yes, okay.
C isn't conjectural.
Right.
And number six, do you believe your interest prevents you from placing the public interest on the official action above your private interest? I.e., do you believe you should be excused from participation in official action?
No, I don't think I need to be excused, but I'm okay if I.
Thank you. Okay, do any members have any questions for the member disclosing? I don't hear any questions for you, Jennifer. My evaluation is that this is not a substantial conflict for this matter tonight. And that is my ruling. If anyone would like to object, we need that and then a second. I don't hear any objections. Thanks, Jennifer, for going through that for the first time with our new card. Okay, so Kyle presented, we had a couple of questions. Now we need a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve expenditure up to $37,000 from, I believe it was the.
Carrot Roads Capital.
Capital Fund. For the, the study on Timberline and Vale.
Thanks, Mike.
Timberline and Vale.
If anyone has a second, go ahead and just second.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Kyle. Any further discussion in the room? Hearing none, could we have a roll call vote, Kyle?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
That motion passes 4-0.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Kyle, for that work. Number eight. This is in the packet, of course, ADA 09547, Proposal to lease 11 acres of state land at Gerwood Airport to Glacier Valley Lodge LLC. Review comment provided by June 12th deadline. We have done this, but we could do that. And then the next sentence says, receive additional input from Glacier Valley Lodge LLC for consideration in comment period ending now July 12th. It's up here on the computer screen in the room. Mike, would you like to start briefly?
Yeah, I think in the packet is the letter we sent, the letter we sent for the first comment period. And when that comment period and solicitation of alternative proposals or alternative lease requests, when that terminated the day after DOT opened up a second comment period, but this is only a public comment period is my understanding. So that means there are no competitive, any competitive bids would have had to have been submitted by June. I don't believe there were any. We have the applicants in front of them. Yeah, I think they've just confirmed. So there were, there were no other bids for that particular lease. So we now have a 30-day period where there's still the opportunity for public comment. I presume people can make, can continue to make comments, even if they've made comments before. And it hopefully also gives the opportunity for the, for the applicants to say a little bit more about their proposal. So I'm going to, it's okay with the chair. I'm going to turn it over to the, to the applicants to see if there's anything else they want to talk about now or later or sometime before 13. Yeah, like.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. You are correct in the 30-day segment. There were no competing applications made. So there will not be a bid processed for this lease. We are happy to continue working with you and our agreement to work with you. And I know there's a land use committee coming up July 10th. We plan to be present at that. And we just asked that we come forward on the four things that were brought to our attention over the last month and a half. That being the road access, the drainage, the impact on the airport and the beauty that we work with you on the, on those four issues and other issues at the July 10th meeting at the land use committee. We are meeting with DOT this Thursday with their leasing group. And if you, if G-Boss has any issues that they would like us to bring to the meeting, we'd be happy to hear those tonight. And that's our update on our end is that there were no competing bids. And we are available at the land use committee meeting coming up this month to dive into those four areas of American market.
Thank you. Sir, could you just, for the record, could you just say your name?
My name is Timothy Grendel. I am Vice President of Glacier Valley Lodge.
Thanks. And just to confirm, I presume we've not heard anything back from DOT or staffs that were, I mean, I don't think they're intending to respond until after the second public comment period is over.
No, they just responded and told us that we needed to mail the comment in.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I think we listed the four things. The other thing I'd probably add to that list is the recreational impact. So yes, just the view shared, but the impact on both Moose Meadows and, and sort of, I guess, illegal accessible access, the, the impact on the trail system in that general area.
All right. We will add that.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you, Timothy. Any other board members to add questions or comments for the Thursday DOT meeting? And I'm sure you could email those as well. I'm not positive, but I'm presuming to the team.
Yes, we'll be checking our emails. And if you don't already have it, I can provide it this evening.
Thank you.
I actually have one question. Sorry. I often did hear some mention about concern about security and how that's going to be managed. Is that more DOT's province than yours? I mean, there's some concern on how.
They, they have their protocols they need to follow with FAA and that being a federally funded airport. And we have to comply with those, but we're also going to work with security fencing and gates for airplanes around the compounds. But yes, we have to follow the state DOT and FAA guidelines.
Thanks. Sorry, Brianna.
Oh, no, that was totally great. Anything else from the board? And I don't see any hands up online. Are there any hands in the room? Thank you again for coming to the meeting and we look forward to hearing after your Thursday meeting.
Brianna, I think Joe wants to speak as well.
We have one more.
Oh, please.
That was my fault. I wanted to defer to the public, non-petitioner, if they had comments. But we came with some prepared.
Again, could you just say your name for the record?
Yeah. I'll get closer. If you don't mind if I sit. That's fine.
Yeah.
I can hear you really well.
Okay, my name's John Faulkner. And I'm an officer of Glacier Valley Lodge. I'm sure my, it's. In any event, sort of here, almost representing my son Andrew in his capacity as president. But these are some prepared remarks that we'll distribute to the board with your permission, chair's permission. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable. Thank you for checking.
All right, why don't I do that? You don't? If there's anybody in the public, we've got two extra copies. So the intent here is pretty much to open the dialogue and to prepare for the land use meeting on 10th. And to get some of the major decisions that have to be made by the community out on the table to help us come to a collective, good decision. The most important, I think, that we've heard is, is access. But we're also addressing some of the other issues here that have come up. Affordable housing, employee housing, the profile of the hotel, traffic counts. And we're trying to provide the most transparent information that we can at this early phase, because there's quite a bit we don't know. And quite a bit that we have yet to discuss with DOT, which is the purpose of the Thursday meeting. So we're not by any stretch limiting our focus on access to Mount Hood. But after hearing the community and looking at all the viable options, we've sort of come to the conclusion that that's where we should focus our energy. And we're definitely interested in hearing from the community on that. So these comments are meant to, again, sort of engage at a little more detailed level, get some of our initial testimony on the record and then get some feedback from you all on how to prepare for the 10th. Because we may be asked to drill down a little deeper on the subject. So that's the extent of my testimony tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean. Go ahead, if anyone has anything.
Just quick check, was there a second page to this? I'm, there's a second page? It looks like they. Was it? Yeah, we only have one page, but I wasn't sure if there was a second page.
No, there's only one.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And so, sorry, through the chair, I can ask a question right, Brianna?
Yes, please.
These are some of the the things you'll be bringing to the land use meeting to discuss, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But they're also intended to engage this board if there's anything in advance of that, that you want us to either address more thoroughly, we're trying to the best of our ability to do that, knowing that there's a lot yet. We don't have, for example, a lease signed and there's a lot of parameters that DOT has that we weren't aware of.
Okay, so just just really quickly, may I ask a couple of questions about this?
Sure.
And so on the improving Mount Hood conclusion under access, I gather that there's a lot of options there. That's not necessarily talking about paving, or it is talking about paving?
It's talking about, we we have to go through a traffic study, that's required. So typically, the traffic study is going to identify recommendations to mitigate or accommodate increased traffic. And and part of what we're trying to do under the next paragraph is project or help project realistically what the traffic counts are. And a lot of that has to do with occupancy, annualized occupancy, the profile of our our guests, how they're arriving and that sort of thing. So we're trying to get a little bit more information out about that because it does impact traffic counts.
And then may I ask, I'm I'm not familiar with what SFR stands?
Single Family Preservation.
Oh.
Any others? Yes. Thank you for all of the numbers in here as well, the percentages and potential goals for listed employees.
I'd like to follow up on on Jennifer's question. The I appreciate the traffic impact analysis, I think it was obviously something that's needed. When you said it is required, is that something DOT has has asked you to do? Because I couldn't find anything that said it was a requirement.
Mine, it was on a sample lease that they shared with us, it was required.
Excellent, thanks. And I guess my other follow up is the as you probably know, we the lease. It's unclear what the what the status is of municipal requirements versus state requirements on this land. I know the state has an opinion, but it's only an opinion. This hasn't been resolved. So what's your, if if there is a requirement, if there's a determination in the end that this has to go through for this normal municipal process as well, is that something that, you know, you'll just deal with as part of your, you know, as part of your development process? Or is that going to, you know, cause a major upset or, I mean, are you assuming there is no requirement to be municipal?
At this point, we're that's we're assuming.
Okay.
We we do have, that has to come to that, we'll do the muni requirements, but at this point, it's not required for a state lease.
But I think that's unclear. I think the state says it isn't required, but the state isn't the determinant of it.
From our conversation with DOT leasing.
Yeah, that's DOT's opinion. That's absolutely correct. But there's maybe no no proper determination. And I don't believe that, I know that planning has been looking at this, I don't think there's any formal statement from planning. Yeah. And I I don't actually think that they would, if it got to legal question, I don't think they would even have necessarily a standing until you're at the point where you'd have to have a permit. Which is when development starts. So there's kind of this weird chicken, there'd be this, maybe this chicken and egg discussion for what?
Yeah, I believe so. We have not gotten any determin. One thing is planning doesn't, can't state opinion on anything unless they receive an application packet.
Right, that's the problem.
But they said that they are in discussions about Ted Stevens Airport and that they're waiting a legal opinion for MO illegal about where code stands with construction on Ted Stevens Airport.
Yeah, Ted Stevens is a little different because there are, there are, there's a building permit requirement. It's in the building service area, so there is a municipal process that applies to any building or any structures on Ted Stevens. Correct, which is accepted by DOT because DOT only make the argument that land use doesn't apply. It doesn't make the argument that building services does not apply.
Correct.
The goal is a very different situation than Ted Stevens.
Correct.
I think that's added some complexity to the process. I don't, I should raise my hand.
Brianna, I think we have another comment.
Great, thank you.
So so with respect to Mike's comment, there'll be a lot of off-site mitigation or whether it's utilities, roads, drainage, all of these considerations. And we sort of look at this as more of a partnership with the adversarial process because it obviously has to be economic, but it also has to be tasteful and nice, supported by the community. Those are obvious factors. But I will say there's one way you might be able to help us in in your deliberations. One of the asks for from DOT is we need to know the utility grid. We need to know the status of water lines and waste lines and electric and gas and all this. We don't have access to any of that without their permissions. And so we'll be asking them on Thursday for that access. And to the degree that we have your support to access that information, it helps us be more proactive disclosing what our recommendation is or what our plans are to tap into the grid, so to speak. So we don't, we're kind of flying blind until we have the actual drawings or the engineering plans for the for the grid. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Whoever would like to speak first, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Jennifer. I I think the you could probably turn around and ask some more questions about the water system because you have a staff behind you. Yeah, I think the, I think there is, I think there are utilities, all utilities in that area. There's definitely water and sewage and and gas and electricity. So I I don't think you'd need probably anything from us directly, just speak to utilities directly and get that information.
Thank you, Mike. Kyle, do you have anything further?
No, I I don't particularly work in the area, but I do know that there's the largest gas line in and Gerwood runs right in front of that property because it feeds Aliask Hotel, sewer is there, water is there. And I think there's actually a couple of transformers right there at the toe of that property. So the only thing in question may be telecoms, which would just have to be extended up that way. So I think everything you need is right there.
Thank you. It's very helpful.
Great, thank you, everyone.
Can I just make a one further comment about active action from the board? So we don't have, we obviously don't have a, we don't have a meeting scheduled between the tenth and the thirteenth when the when the information, when the, sorry, when the public comment, the next round of public comments closes. Perhaps we should think about if we're going to, if we're going to respond based on the land use information that comes out of land use, we perhaps might want to think about having a a special meeting on the, would that be the eleventh or something? Maybe. I'm not suggesting we schedule it now, I'm just throwing out the idea.
Thank you, Mike. I was trying to look in the calendar, but then, okay. Those are. Their meeting is this Thursday.
Brianna has her hand up.
I wanted to mention, because the timing on that is awkward, I think it's actually the thirteenth of July that the letter is required to be at DOT, but it does have to be mailed. So any.
Well, it's the deadline.
Right. So another idea would be maybe to talk to land use and see about setting a special meeting sometime in between now and the tenth. So that that could be a single purpose meeting with you and EBOs and of course all the public to address the item. And that would give a longer amount of time for any response to be generated from that meeting. And of course, the week before is awkward for its own reasons. So anyway, it would take some planning, but that might be a more efficient way to go about this.
Understood. Thank you, Margaret, and thank you, Mike. Any other thoughts?
I'm just saying, since we, since we have the opportunity, that's perhaps a good question to pose to the to the applicants. Is that something that would you could consider?
Yes.
Have somewhere, perhaps the first week of July?
Yes.
We'll see if we can schedule something.
Okay, thank you.
Great suggestion. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, everyone. Anything else on that item? We'll move to number nine, Consider Public Safety Advisory Committee Request for Funding Assistance for Cyberbullying Workshop to Be Held in October twenty twenty three. Will be speaking to this.
Thank you. Real quick, we're gonna, we have no update on this item as to what amount we're seeking, but right now, PSAC members are chasing grant opportunities, which will help us determine what the final funding request is, which may be nothing depending on the grants that could possibly come in. So we will have an update for you in July.
Thanks, Kyle. I'll look forward to that. Anything else on that item from anyone? Okay. Number ten, Staff Request for Approval for Expenses Related to Review Process for the Gerwood Trails Plan by Planning and Zoning.
Correct, and I'll take this, I'm sorry, getting to, there it is. So we met with the planning and zoning, we had a pre-application meeting with them. And through that process, they provided us with a list of comments and changes, nothing substantial, but more clarification that they would like to see in the plan before we go to planning and zoning for that approval process. And so with that, we do need the services of Huddle to come help us with that and also help us with the application for planning and zoning and and to make the edits within the existing plan from those comments that we received. So we asked Huddle for a proposal here and and you'll see the amount for forty nine fifty, which would mostly be especially with the planning and zoning commission. And Holly would be there to help us get through that process, be part of the meeting process, meeting with planning zone, and then also prep and meeting with the assembly for final approval there if we get approval for planning and zoning in that aspect. In our agenda, it says that we're asking for thirty, thirty three hundred, three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars because we have some remaining funding still with Huddle left over. And so total work left to do would be five thousand with them. The other part of our request tonight is that we're asking for the board to approve four thousand from the capital account. Both these items would come from the capital account, but that four thousand would just be the fee to submit our application to planning zoning for approved, for reviewing and approving the trail Gerwood Trails Plan.
Thank you, Kyle. And this item is old business, so we have had this presentation, but more updated tonight. Are there any questions for Kyle? Comments?
Oh, I'll put it over here. Guy's got his hand up.
Yeah, just looking at her. We're looking at the estimated and then the and then the four K and then what we have right now. Seven thousand, three hundred and fifty, is that what you were thinking would be the, what you're gonna need?
With truly what we're gonna, we're asking for is really repurposing the leftover money we had, it it would be five thousand dollars that we'd be putting aside now, covering for this portion of the trails plan project and then our four thousand. So you're you're looking close to nine thousand dollars to get the plan over the hurdle. Now, these are time and material with Holly, so she may not use all that like we did. We had money left over from the original trails plan there that we're applying towards this. So we may not use all this funding, but that's the height of what she thinks she may need to do the work to get to final approval and adoption.
And I move that we we approve not to exceed three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars from Gerwood Capital Fund to Huddle AK for technical edits to get the Gerwood Trails Plan through the PNC and assembly process. They'll do the other one separately for another reason. I've got a question about that.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any further discussion on that motion?
I'll just say quickly, when we're making, when we're paying other parts of the municipality for for things, does that have to come out of capital or can it, it's an IGC effectively, isn't it? Why isn't it an IGC?
It's a direct pay, so in this case, IGCs are set annually with our budget.
So we'd say that's not for a particular service?
No, so this would be, it's a, it's a one-time service that we pay to the planning department, which also pays to the commission to review our application process.
But isn't that also the case when we do things like get tires changed at AFD? So is that based on specific services we request?
So with AFD, we have an account, we have a special line that's thirty thousand dollars for maintenance costs.
Okay.
So when they go buy tires, they apply that money to thirty thousand, we don't. But we do have IGC for building facilities, so every year they charge us fifty thousand dollars, which covers the guys that come out at any moment to do a repair, so.
In that case, can I make an amend my motion and say seven thousand, three hundred and fifty for Gerwood Capital Fund, for Gerwood Trails Capital Fund, or Parks and Rec Capital?
Do we have a second for the amendment?
Yeah, I'll second that amendment.
Thanks, Jennifer. Anything further on the amendment? Or discussion? No hands?
No.
Julie has her hand up. Any other board questions before I go to a hand? Okay, Julie online?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, this is Julie Raymond Yocobian, and I wanted to give a brief chronology of how we got here tonight. During the Trail Plan Subcommittee Process, money was wasted when people continually undermined the efforts to protect primitive trails whose inclusion were completely within the scope, that was not reined in and of course led to money draining down. In a decision based on inaccuracies and that violated the munis code of ethics, G boss denied GTC's request for a small amount of additional contractor funding to continue their work with the subcommittee. The staff then, without any authority to do so, disbanded the subcommittee, oddly claimed they didn't and claimed the lack of contractor funding to facilitate those meetings informed their actions. Then the process spiraled for months on end and even further out of control and beyond the approved scope, which was originally designed to serve the entire community. Process was continually made up and changed on the fly. Multiple votes were taken by the community to protect primitive trails, reflecting the fact that primitive trail users are one of three core trails constituencies this plan needed to serve. These community decisions were obliterated by continued process abuse where revoting essentially continued to happen until built trail advocates had gotten everything for themselves, disenfranchising a significant portion of the community. Even promises for full community review of what came out of that ridiculous process were not met. In the plan's current state, only built trail groups in the community got something. There's an interesting overlap here with the undisclosed interests associated with the G boss code of ethics violation. The entire structure and process and innumerable volunteer hours of citizens who entered that process in good faith, assuming everyone's well-being would be valued, were completely undermined by staff doing something they had no authority to do and G boss unethically decision-making in a way that resulted in certain interests, precisely those it didn't declare to the public, being the ones served by the plan and which has the result of this public money essentially being funneled to those private interests. Because where the rubber meets the road, this plan is in large part about bypassing UDC review for trail projects in the plan because that costs money for applicants. This even worse, if that abridged version was not enough, is that now incredibly you're being asked to provide more money into this process for the contractor when you wouldn't do so before to ensure their continued facilitation of a subcommittee process that, despite its problems, was at least doing the job of serving the entire community. And we now see that there actually was money left in the contractor's budget, meaning even more project and management oversight issues on top of the nonsense justification associated with disbanding the subcommittee. Good community planning should serve the whole community, not just some, not just some possible majority that hammers and hammers until they get everything they just they want. This plan does not meet that basic standard. It completely violates its original intent and scope. Even one G boss member noted the plan does not have the stamp of community approval. In conclusion, the process of how we got here is unethical, it's bad planning, it's abuse of democratic process, it does not serve the community, it disenfranchises a significant portion of our trail users, and it involves some extremely disturbing actions and patterns related to private interests and public funds and decisions. and it involves some extremely disturbing actions and patterns related to private interests and public funds and decision-making. You should not grant this request for funding and you should withdraw your support for this plan.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And I don't see any other hands. Any other comments? I don't see any or hear any, so I would ask Kyle for a roll call vote on the amended motion.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thanks, Kyle. And do we need to go to the original motion next?
No, I think he just amended.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep, just making sure. All right. Next is 11, Agenda Item LUC 2305-06, AWU request for GBOS Resolution of Support and intra-government permit IGP between Girdwood Parks and Rec and AWU for a proposed project to create a substation at Vale Drive.
This is where I'd like to do my disclosure, please?
Thank you, Mike. Please.
So I would immediately offset the proposed substation. But I think that means that's a disclosable fact.
Yes. Thank you. And that is your detailed description provided. You live right across from the site?
Yeah, immediately outside.
Is this interest financial or personal?
It's personal.
And who holds the interest?
I do and my household.
Okay, and when did the interest arise?
I think when the location was chosen, I guess for where the substation would be. Obviously, I knew there was a pump there.
And how does the matter before the body impact the interest specifically? Is the interest a substantial part of the matter under consideration?
It is a substantial part of the matter under consideration.
And does the impact on the interest very, directly vary with the outcome of the official action?
It somewhat varies based on the outcome of the official action.
And C, is the impact on the interest immediate or conjectural and dependent on factors beyond the official action?
It's I think the impact is dependent on factors beyond the official action because it's not just the granting of the intergovernmental permit. The effect on me is about what gets built and how it gets built and how it runs after that.
And do you believe your interest prevents you from placing the public interest on the official action above your private interest?
I do not.
And do you believe you should be excused from participation in the official action on this matter?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you. Do any other members have any questions for the member disclosing? No questions? Okay, I agree this disclosure and in conflict is personal and is somewhat substantial. And the fact that you are able to hold your public interest in the official action above your private interest is important. And the chair, so I'm looking at the sheet. So what we can do is we vote on Mike's participation and his ability to vote on this item. If that would be okay with everyone. So the question is, does Mike have a substantial interest? Or, and we've determined that it's a personal interest. I have determined it's a personal interest in the matter to be described before the Assembly. I think that's the question I have to ask. So we would vote in the negative and then if that passes, Mike can fully participate in the proceedings. I hope that makes sense. So go ahead. Yes.
No, there was no question. I think the only thing you used the word Assembly, but you meant before the Girdwood Order Supervisors.
I did. Okay. Then the GBOS member. Okay. So Kyle, if you wouldn't mind doing a roll call vote, and again, if your answer is no, that means you believe that this is not a substantial conflict.
Okay. Brianna Sullivan?
No.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
No.
And Mike can't vote.
No wins, two, one.
Okay. All right. Any, any? Okay, I can't see you, so I just don't know. All right, we are ready for the presentation. Thank you for coming. And Mike, you are, the ruling is that you're able to participate and vote on the matter.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. I'll start off here first and I'll introduce representatives from AWU. But we were approached by AWU to discuss a intergovernment use permit for a section of land on Vale. Actually, the section parcel runs between Vale and Timberline to install and expand a water station there that helps to pressurize the water and move it throughout the upper valley. And so we've been working through it and the process would be is that we would give AWU a intergovernment use permit to use the land, which then will allow them to build and expand a new substation there. So I'd like to introduce the folks from AWU. Come on up and let me get the camera towards you and go ahead and state your name.
Would you like to move this microphone closer?
You can just roll that over if you like. That would help.
Easier than waiting for people with not.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name is Trevor Fratsky. I'm with the Anker Waste Party Utility. I am the project manager for the Girdwood Water Distribution System Improvements Project. I have with me Mario, the Girdwood Systems Superintendent for AWU, and Jennifer, my project engineer, who's the real brains of this operation. But as Cal mentioned, and I did provide the PDFs to Cal, so those online can follow along this time. So we presented to the Girdwood Land Use Committee last week regarding this project, as Cal mentioned, in an attempt to get a GBOS Resolution of Support for the intergovernmental permit. So a brief overview of the project Kyle alluded to, this is a new facility on Vale Drive. I'm sorry, can everyone see if I addressed from here? On Vale Drive between Alpine Meadows, Timberline, I believe you call it the Upper Valley area. What this facility does is we have three existing underground facilities. They've reached the end of their useful life. They're hard to maintain. The equipment needs replaced. They're insufficient to meet current standards for AWU. We looked at the best way to upgrade them rather than upgrading each facility individually with a up-to-date above-ground facility. It was deemed most efficient to build an above-ground facility on a piece of land currently owned by parks. And what this does is allows us to provide some benefits that the current facilities do not have. One is better service to the customers downstream. The other is backup generator service during power outages. So when the power goes out, you no longer will use water service. Some of the other things that I wanted to show you on this figure, we're adding some water lines in the area. It'll do two other things, one of which is we'll provide increased pressure to properties on St. Yorin Loop that have currently low pressures. The other thing it will do is provide additional flow to St. Moritz and Echo Ridge Drive, which will allow for future hydrants. Whether that's through an improvement district or through other means is yet to be investigated. We are at the 35% design level. We deemed it appropriate to obtain control of the real estate before continuing with design. So you can see what we're asking for the support of GBOS for is this IGP shown in this area. And this figure kind of shows a zoomed-in view of what we're actually looking at with the satellite off, so you can really see what's going on. Everybody's favorite part so far has been our graphical rendering of the facility. We had a, we have an architect on this job who is a Girdwood resident, I believe. He had a cabin here for over 25 years, so he's recently retired, but we asked him to give us some facility concepts that will fit in in a neighborhood at Girdwood. And so what that is, is it's a beveled cedar siding building, gable end, green metal roof, brown fiberglass doors. It's meant to look like a house in Girdwood. You can see the gentleman who did it actually lives down the street, who's able to walk up, get some photos and kind of blended it. So that's a concept of what it'll look like, colors and everything, neutral, medium wood state. Looking a little bit more at the site, it's just basically a gravel pad, looks like a gravel driveway with a home on it essentially, even though it's our water facility. And then we will directional drill a water line over to Timberline to absorb the function of that facility there. So some of the benefits I did also mention, it's coming up to standards, approved operations, maintenance facility, reduced capital costs over upgrading three facilities, better pressures, more reliable service, backup service during power outages, increased water pressure, fire hydrant potential. And then the last that I like to play up a little bit, and I've had conversations with Mike, AWU facilities make good neighbors. What do you think about when you think of good neighbor? They're quiet. This facility won't make any noise. It's a water facility, won't have any smell. When the power goes out, the generator comes on automatically. You might hear a brief hum. That's about it. When you have a problem, you can call. That's Mario. Everybody knows Mario. If you have a problem with AWU in Girdwood, Mario handles it. That's how it's always been. They're clean. There's no trash. There's no parking issues. There's no traffic at hours of the day and night. We normally work between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. So anyways, I wanted to kind of finish up with, when you see the actual intergovernmental permit, this is what's shown on it, is a hashed area for an IGP for the facility itself and then an easement for. Happy to take any questions from anyone.
Please go ahead if you have any from the board.
Well, the first question is, can you guarantee it will not be a short-term rent claim?
I think that I can, actually. I always say, well, there's no guarantees. But so what happens is when AWU builds a facility like this, it's planned basically into perpetuity that once we have a facility like this, it doesn't revert back to something else. It becomes, you know, the backbone of the system. In my lifetime, there'll be nobody living there.
The more serious questions, you know, we've already had an exchange about this, is you mentioned the hydrant question about whether hydrants would be part of this project or associated AWU project or whether they'd have to be paid for by residents in Echo Ridge and St. Moritz. That's a future question or have you got any further with?
So to address the question is, in our previous, at the Land Use Committee, I said hydrants will be available through a hydro improvement district. Mike and I had significant dialogue between then and now. And with the investigation I did, I did not have a conclusion on whether or not there was something there that said, hey, AWU should provide this as part of the capital project or it should be provided by the residents. But we are at 35% design level. I will investigate it and flesh it out as we continue. And if there are further questions on it, I can coordinate with you directly. I think you're hearing kind of your overarching question is you'd like to know if it's going to be part of the capital project or part or?
Yeah, or part of another project.
Okay, very good.
One of the justifications for this was it would provide hydrants in the area. It doesn't have hydrants. It's very easy to provide water. I think the chief can explain how difficulties.
Yep. Best parts of the world, but you can't sort of pump up that.
Yeah, and we had a fire there in 2019 and in different circumstances it would have spread. So it's pretty important that the hydrants, if there are hydrants provided eventually, and this is definitely a step towards that. If they have to be paid for by individual, by the individual property owners, when they're already paying the same fees as we are, who has hydrants, that seems to be accurate.
So to kind of wrap that up, this project is the first thing that makes that possible. And through the work that I'm doing on this project, I will investigate to answer the question on whether it is appropriate to be part of this project, a future project or an improvement.
I got a question or just you could just verify. Just getting your building some there. This isn't phase one of bigger and better things. This is looking 50 years into the future and.
Yes, and I'm nodding because I was waiting for the conclusion there. Again, guaranteeing things, but yes, this is the concept for, these facilities have been there since the area was developed. At the time, that was, hey, this is the best that we can come up with. Now that there has been developed, this is the right answer to accommodate this. In 50 years, I don't know what the valleys look like, but I would be willing to bet you nothing's going to have changed in 50 years about that facility. Once we build a facility, we'd like to keep it and maintain it. It involves a considerable investment on our part. And if we do our job now, it can meet the needs of the community for that period of time. So design life for these types of things used to be 20 years. Costs being what they are now, we try to exceed that.
Any other questions from board members?
One other question, this actually came from another community member, not from me. You've addressed issues about sight and smell and sound. What about lighting? So that's an area that, so one of my neighbors uses for Aurora photography. So it's a very dark, it's a relatively dark area.
And I'm gonna rotate this towards you just so I can point to it. We have one little light over the door, looked like a porch light under, under house, just so that we can get to the door safely, not in the dark. That's it.
But no lighting in the back, no floodlights around the hall?
No, great question. No lighting in the back, no floodlights. AWU trucks currently have headlights, so we'll be able to get that far. No perimeter lighting. You might see lights through the windows when it's occupied, but the lights aren't typically on, but nobody's in it.
That's a really good question because we had a little development and it's got these very bright streetlights, but it's, you know, it's a street light in the whole neighborhood, lighting up. So it looks ridiculous. So that's a super good question.
Yeah, and it's actually very relevant because it's something that we've addressed previously on how to fit in in an AWD. So we don't have need for floodlights, streetlights, et cetera.
They're so bright.
Yes, yeah, blinding. Yeah, blinding. Yeah, it very, it looked like a.
Thank you, Trevor. Was that Chief Weston or someone else in the room?
Me, thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I also had a lighting question and actually was going to ask if it was a motion sensor, which can be very bright or stay on and off and on and off when cars go by. But if it's pointed downward in that small image that we're seeing on this, in the screen picture here, that's amicable. And then Trevor, I was gonna ask, next, who would plow it? This winter?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Who would provide the snow plowing?
AWU typically plows our own facilities. That'd be Mario and his guys.
Okay. And then I also was concerned about the fire hydrants up above the area that this would profoundly improve all, a lot of Girdwood and recipients, but not all the streets above it for access to fire hydrants. So it is a great concern of ours as representatives and for all the taxpayers. So if you could, please keep us in mind as you go through this research. You'd appreciate it for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. It, it's not lost upon me, um, the comments that I'm hearing from everyone of, hey, we pay the same as somebody who already had a hydrant. Typically when Aewu expands, sometimes we buy a private system. We don't have any control over what was there. Um, and then it is the, the responsibility of homeowners. I don't know the situation for this yet, but I will absolutely keep everyone's comments in mind as we investigate.
Thank you, Trevor.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, everybody.
Is Mario presenting as well or Trevor tonight? I'm sorry I'm asking.
Uh, I, Mario is, uh, you know, he's here, he's here mostly to make sure I tell you no untruth, so, uh, but, uh, Mario, everybody.
If anyone has a soul request.
Well, thank you both for being here and other staff as well. Anything else from the room on this? We will, I don't see any, and we will need a motion.
I'll move the, I'll move that, uh, GBOS provides a resolution to support for an intra-government to government, to government permit to undergo parts and recs in Aewu for a proposed project to create a substation at Vale Drive.
Thank you. A second.
I'll take it.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, can we have a roll call vote? Kyle, please?
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you, everyone. Moving to number 12, Agenda Item LUC 2305-07, Alien Species Inc. Request for GBOS Letter of Non-Objection for weed spraying on MOA land in 2023. And I won't read that last part because I think we changed, it was changed. Sorry, not we, it was changed. So I'll let you take it away, Jennifer or Margaret, first.
Sure. I think what we'll do is invite Tim up from, uh, Alien Species to give a presentation. We have a PowerPoint and, uh, pull that up now, just a second, but come on up and, uh, uh, maybe just stand right over there and let me get the camera on you.
Perfect. Thank you, Tim, for coming out again.
Thank you. I gotta get the direction the right way. And, uh, let me do just a quick thing here, but Tim, you want to introduce yourself? Go ahead.
Sure, yeah, Tim, I'm Tim Stalard with Alien Species Control. Uh, so I have been, uh, managing invasive plants, invasive species in the Girdwood community, uh, for the past eight years. Uh, this has been a community-driven effort that predates me by, I don't know, eight or so years prior. And so, yes, basically, so, yeah, Kyle's pulling up the PowerPoint. Uh, so invasive species are species that are not native to Alaska and cause some sort of harm. And so the concern, particularly in Alaska, of course, is, is the harm to our natural resources. Uh, so we have species that have, you know, hitchhiked with our goods or on people, or some, in some cases were planted, you know, originally. And from our communities, these species have the potential to invade natural areas, completely take over our natives, our native species, and, and, and as a result, disrupt ecosystems.
Sorry, for some reason it's not going big screen. Uh, let me see if I can just try to.
So basically, so, so we have these harmful species and, um, and a growth curve that.
Oh, Kyle's working on pulling up.
I'm sorry. I have to go. Let me, uh, just give me a second. We have to go to another location.
I keep talking to you. So the, so the concern is that it's a biological wildfire. We have this potential, and I mean, we're seeing exponential, exponential growth of these species if we do nothing. They arrive, they start to, you know, like, oh, they, you know, they find their place in Alaska and then just spread and spread and spread. You know, I've got it pictured here. We're starting to see, you know, orange hawkweed invading, you know, wildflower meadows at, you know, above a thousand feet in Chigetch State Park. Um, you know, we have reed canary grass that threatens salmon streams, salmon spawning habitat. Spotted napweed, which has caused tremendous damage in Montana and other Northwest states. Luckily, it's not in Girdwood, but there's a population of that along Turning An Arm that we're trying to get. Uh, Bohemian knotweed is another species that can invade, um, streams and, uh, thoroughly degrade salmon spawning habitat. Um, that's one that we, we found, um, a Forest Service employee found, and we successfully controlled that so far. We treated that in 2021, did not find any last summer, but obviously going to be keeping our eyes on that. Knotweed is a species that can even break concrete. So now again, in England, it's destroyed home foundations. So that's a species, it's not just an ecological concern, there's, um, yeah, some real infrastructure damage as well. Um, so, so this is, yeah, kind of a list of some of those top species of concern, knotweed that I mentioned, reed canary grass, sweet clover, orange hawkweed, uh, thistle, bird cherry. Uh, so European bird cherry, luckily it's not a huge issue here in Girdwood. There's, there's a few around. Uh, but if you go into Anchorage proper, like the Chester Creek Trail, our forests are just absolutely overrun with these bird, these bird cherry trees, the Mayday trees, as a lot of people call them. And it's, I mean, it's, it's profoundly disturbing to see our forests, you know, which, which should be a natural forest, just totally overrun with the monoculture of these non-native species. And that's, you know, it's, it's one thing if it's an urban part of Anchorage, but we, we don't want to see our natural areas have, you know, have this happen for natural areas. Okay, so next. So it is, so it's that biological wildfire that I mentioned. Uh, so reed canary grass is one of the species that I mentioned. Um, and this photo is showing tarping. So, you know, we want to look at all of the potential control options. Um, one is tarping where you physically cover it, you know, with a landscape fabric, et cetera, et cetera. Really problematic. So I inherited this project, tarping reed canary grass at Westchester Lagoon along the coastal trail. Probably a $50,000 or more project, um, all said and done, that was very unsuccessful. When I, so I inherited the project, first thing I had to do was expand the tarps because the reed canary grass was, was spreading by underground ryze zones. So it was just kind of escaping the tarps. And so what, and so you leave it, you have to leave it down for two years, so it killed absolutely everything growing there. Um, the Parks Department brought in topsoil to introduce additional invasive plants, bird vetch. And so it's just, so you go there today and there's another, now there's bird vetch and the reed canary grass is coming back. So it's, it was very expensive, very labor intensive, very unsuccessful. But it's, you know, yeah, so it's one of the options, but not a, not a very, not a, not a good one, unfortunately. Um, orange hawkweed is another, another species we're very concerned about. Um, it's, I didn't mention the invasive plant ranking system. This one's ranked 79 out of 100. So there's a, there's a, uh, quantitative analysis to like the relative harm that, that, and relative risk that these species pose to Alaska. So there's no, there's no perfect 100, but, but 79 is one of the more, uh, more invasive plants we're facing. Um, and so, so that, yeah, that photo is at 1,200 feet, um, up in Chigetch State Park. It's invaded a wildflower meadow, crowded out the native plants. So this species, it's a legal pathit. So that means it, it puts chemicals into the soil that inhibit other plants. So it, it, you know, it, it uses chemicals to, to crowd out everything else. And that's one of its mechanisms to completely take over, um, natural areas. Um, and this, this one, it's, you know, it's, yeah, hand pulling actually can stimulate it to grow faster. Same with mowing, you know, so if people get it in their lawns, you might, you know, mowing would be the, the obvious, seemed to be the obvious thing to do, but it can stimulate it to grow back thicker, unfortunately. Um, and yeah, a little, because little bits of fragments can regrow. Uh, bird vetch, people have probably seen this. It's, yeah, it's the viney plant that crawls over anything that gets in its path. You know, landscaping, grass, roses, trees. Really like sunny areas. That's kind of the, maybe the saving grace for Girdwood. More, maybe more of a chance here. Fairbanks, yeah, Fairbanks is like the worst spot in the state for this because it's, since it's pretty sunny in the summers up there. It's just driving around Fairbanks, it's just piles of this every road around Fairbanks. It's really, yeah, it's kind of sad, but, okay, next. Uh, thistle, um, this is a really troublesome plant for agriculture. Um, it's spiny. Um, yeah, it gets, it gets into farmers' fields and really reduces their productivity. It's really hard to control. Um, this, this one, this thistle was, uh, tarped in Girdwood by the, uh, Alaska Association Conservation Districts, who was kind of managing this program before. They, they asked me to take over when they lost their capacity to do, to do this, this work about eight years ago. But yes, it, yeah, noxious weed in Alaska, so it's illegal to sell and distribute. Okay, next. Uh, sweet clover, um, sweet clover really likes disturb gravel areas, so it spreads along our roads and highways. Um, and when it gets to a bridge, it can easily spread down, um, our rivers because it likes to disturb gravel along natural glacial rivers as well. Uh, so it's, you know, it's, it's unfortunately pretty thick along the Matanuska Rivers, Tacon River in Southeast, um, the Nana River by Denali. Um, it's, and this one is kind of, is like bird vetch is spreading up the Hall Road, um, north up to Coldfoot. And yeah, produces lots and lots of seeds. Okay, next. So what can we do? You know, we, we do, we want to look at all the options. Prevention is key. You know, don't bring in new species, don't plant a problem in your garden. And even things that are here, there's a lot we could still do to prevent them. You know, we might have hawkweed, you know, in our communities, but you want to, so you want to clean your, your shoes before you go hiking in the Chigetch or go hiking in the, in the National Forest. Um, next is manual, um, if you go to the next slide. So manual is, is hand pulling. And, and it's on, depending on the species, on a small scale, this can work. Um, like it's, it's a decent solution for white sweet clover. Um, it can slow down bird vetch, um, and toad flax. Uh, but as I mentioned, it'll stimulate that growth of orange hawkweed potentially. And then, yeah, not effective for reed canary grass either. Uh, mechanical control is like, is mowing, weed whacking. Um, or tarping is also considered mechanical control. Uh, so depending on the species, you can kind of slow things down. But for these, these invasive plants, they, they're very aggressive spreaders. They're very hard to kill. Uh, so the mowing and the hand pulling, you know, might buy you a little time, you know, might, might help if you have a, a few square feet in a yard. Uh, but just on the, the scale of protecting Alaska's landscapes, it's just, these aren't ultimately effective, um, for the, the threats we're facing. Uh, so leaves us with herbicide is kind of our, our last option. Um, and it's the only effective one to kill these hard to kill invasive plants because it, it will kill the roots. So the plants can't come back, um, like they, they will, they will if you just pull them or mow them. So we do some low-risk options. Um, and when we do applications, they're very targeted. Um, you know, I'm a biologist, my staff are biologists, we're, you know, we're trained in plant identification. We're, we're directly spraying target plants. We're not, you know, we're not doing any wide, um, the native plants to recover and, and fill back in. So we want, we don't want to kill any more than, than just the, the target invasives. Okay, next. So, and you know, herbicides are, they're, they're a low-risk category of pesticides. Um, they directly, you know, I like the cliche of the right tool for the job. They're very targeted directly to plant, to plant chemical pathways. You know, so they, they interrupt a plant, a plant's chemical process that, that humans and animals um, and insects and fish don't have. So the ones we work with are all in the, so the EPA has these risk categories and they're all in the lowest category, um, which is a caution. Um, and so that includes things like your home ant and roach spray, deep bug spray. Uh, certainly things that you want to use carefully, you know, use caution. Read, you know, read all the label, all the safety instructions, uh, but they are, they are low-risk chemicals. Okay, next. Uh, so this is, this is showing just relative toxicity of, there's some herbicides on the lower left. Um, and the upper right are more toxic are things like vitamin D, coffee, aspirin, um, ibuprofen. Uh, so things that we, you know, we choose to consume. You know, if you have a headache or coffee's makes life bearable in the mornings. Uh, but you don't, but you don't want to overdo it, of course. So, and, and yeah, herbicides the same way. There's, you don't want to overdo it. Um, but they, they do have a, a reasonable place to manage our resources. Okay, next. So it is, you know, it's, it's a, it's a balancing act. We want to, you know, look at the big picture. You know, so herbicides will have a very, you know, short-term, very limited impact. You know, go in, uh, control the invasive plants, let the native species fill back in. Very short-term effect, whereas the, the invasive plants, you know, it's just, are this just biological wildfire, fire. You know, it's, it's like a disease of our ecosystems that you're just going to spread and spread and spread. You know, if we don't, um, interrupt that, that spread. So there, yeah, so it's, you know, looking at the big picture, you know, the herbicides, yeah, very limited, like, versus, yeah, letting the problem spiral out of control. Uh, so we have some before and after pictures here. Uh, so this was, uh, bird vetch that was along, um, so it's, uh, Arleberg, out towards the resort with Moose Meadow in the background. So Arleberg had spread quite, was, was pretty thick along the bike path. Uh, so we sprayed it back in 2017, um, and then did a small amount of spot treatment follow up, uh, 2021. So in that upper right, sort of the, the thick shrub, bushy stuff is all bird vetch. So it's kind of growing on top of the willows and, and everything else. Um, and so that lower left, so just the bird vetch is dead. And then in the following years, it, it looked like a totally native ecosystem. The bird vetch had been, um, been eliminated. Okay, next. Uh, so, yeah, we modified the proposal from the land use committee, um, as, as was suggested from the land use committee last, uh, week. Uh, so just, yeah, just proposing work for 2023. Um, there's bird vetch that we've been, we, so we've been weed whacking and hand pulling it for eight years along Hightower Road, and that's, it's still there. So we, yeah, we'd like to spray it, try to spray it this year to kind of really knock it back. Um, Olympic Loop, kind of a small area near the sits that just has, again, just these huge amounts of bird vetch. Um, and then Crystal Mountain, there's some small but thick patches of orange hawkweed, uh, in the ditch along the roads there. And then there's a, yeah, small patch of thistle at Aliaskavue and Garmisch, um, that we've treated in the past. Yes, there's still a little bit there that we'd like to, to get. And I think that's, yeah, so it is, you know, it is a choice. You know, I know, I understand folks have strong feelings about herbicides. Um, as I said, they, the, they are low-risk herbicides that are directly applied. And the choice is, you know, do we want to lose our resources to these invasive species? Or do we want to fight to protect, you know, what makes Alaska special and keep, you know, keep our resources intact that, that support our, our lives, our livelihoods here, our, our recreation, our resource-dependent jobs, culture for a lot of Alaskans?
Brianna, you have your mic off.
Thank you. I didn't know if there is anything I was missing. Uh, thanks very much, Tim, for your presentation and coming back to the Girdwood community and coming before GBOS again. I am pleased to see your presentation for the second time because I think it's really important in protecting our ecosystems and all the wildlife and the fish is, is integral. So thank you for explaining the differences between, um, the, the success rate of pulling versus direct spraying. Do any board members have questions or comments? Please go ahead if you do.
Hey, Tim, thanks for coming down and talking about this. Yeah, it's interesting and good to hear, you know, um, of the expert down here. So I, I know during last meeting there was some concern maybe about one of the herbicide was possibly viewed as a little more harmful than the other one, uh, glyphosate. And when do you choose to use one or the other? Does some work on one plant and one on the other? Or when, when exactly do you make that decision?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Certain herbicides work on some plants and others don't at all. So that's why I originally had asked for, for the two options, have a little bit more complete toolbox. Uh, but I, I did the current issues, would just call for the milestone herbicide. Um, and so I had originally asked for glyphosate in case the not, the Bohemian knotweed came back, or if we found a, a treasure trove of reed canary grass. Um, but I, but with current, the current known issues, um, just the milestone would, would, um, address, yeah, the current issues, so. And maybe, yeah, make the, the question more palatable to, to the land use committee as well.
Sure. And then, you know, after you discussed the discussion last week during Land Use, it was, you know, it's interesting. And there are recent EPA reports, I think both these I have are 2020, you know, that it was good to see they they put the bees and they did study on that and the effects on bees and, you know, acute chronic effects on bees and then yeah, I yeah, I just came back and talked more about it and
So I have a question about, so it sounds like the main things you're tackling here in Gerwood are the bird vetch and the hawk, right?
Yes.
That's current, I mean, current issues are bird vetch and hawk.
There's, there's been white, sorry, been a lot of white sweet clover at the airport. So it's not municipal land, but that's DOT, as everybody knows here.
Okay.
So.
And so the, I think I saw on your previous slide that the sometimes hand pulling can be somewhat effective with the bird vetch, but you have not had much luck at really knocking it back and getting rid of it in Gerwood with the hand pulling because of the
Correct.
Right? And then the hawk weed is actually gets I'm for a little bit, we're a little excited about the, and so the hand pulling actually, if anything, might exacerbate the problem with hawk weed. Is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, kind of it stimulates, it seems to stimulate it to grow back thicker. There was a researcher did from the provision from the Agricultural Research Service did plots in Talkeetna. And they meticulously pulled every little hogweed plant out. And they came back a month later and those plots had grown back thicker. Which is really discouraging.
I'm like me with horse tail, but anyway, that's all.
Thanks. I've got a question, not directly related to what you're planning to do, but it was actually just a thought based on one of the slides there. You mentioned the the boot cleaning stations that we have at a lot of trailheads. I recall a discussion with Forest Service employee a while back. Who was saying there were more invasive species on further into trails which have heavy bike use. Is there some kind of equivalent solution for for bikes to sort of encourage, you know, some kind of cleaning or at least tire structural cleaning?
Yeah, I think I think the best would just be more education of the bike community to try to clean their bikes before hitting the trails, just to recreate any recreation in general, ATVs, horses, dogs. I mean, the only thing I thought for bikes would be like a a long handled brush on a chain at trailheads, but that I don't know how long that would last, but, right, yeah, yeah.
That's interesting, you know, so you don't like, well, we have a wildfire, it's way too bright, you're being washed on the way.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It's going to be time.
Yeah, ideally, we, yeah, educate recreationalists to do that at home, but
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we have, we have, we have an organization here that encourages bike use. Bike, so maybe they'll, maybe they'll take that up.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anything else? Thank you, Mike, for bringing that up. I was also thinking of the foot brushes in Gerwood and how few of our trails have them. So that would be a nice discussion to bring forth to the Friends of Trails and other organizations as well for the implementation. And thanks again, Tim, for being the expert in the room. And I also came across something from the HLB plan that we've all looked at recently. And their acknowledgement of impact and interest that guides land management practices to minimize, maximize benefits to the municipality and the public seeking to preserve and enhance the value of its land assets. It also claims to ensure that land is reasonably protected from adverse impacts, including fire, insect damage, plant disease, and invasive species. So HLB would also be supportive of their lands having this addressed. And any other comments from the board before we take public comments or questions to Tim? Hearing none. Jackie, go ahead, please.
Jackie, you have your mic off.
Can you hear me now?
We got you now.
Great. Hey, I have a question for our guest regarding the ranunculus that I think is taking over Gerwood. The the yellow buttercup. I walked from one side of England to the other and that stuff was everywhere. When I walked the coast to coast trail. So I know who bought that into Gerwood. She bought one clump about 25 years ago and gifted me a piece of it. So what can be done about that ranunculus?
Yeah, it seems to be the question of the hour. I'm still kind of learning more about that species myself. It's it's a big issue in coastal areas, Juno and Kodiak, my colleagues there are facing the same issue. We don't, we don't see it as much in Anchorage proper, just being a little drier, but it really likes it seems really like this area. I'm not I think in small clumps, you could dig it up. But I think it's kind of like with the other invasives, it's going to be really challenging. Yes, herbicides could potentially yeah, would would help control it. But yeah, that's it's a species I'm still learning more about myself, but it's, yeah, it's a tough one.
So Jackie, the reason that, oh, sorry, this is Margaret. I just wanted to explain that the reason that we're kind of giggling about this in here is because I've tormented Tim for a number of years about my orange hogweed growth in my backyard. So anyway, it definitely is getting worse here in Gerwood. I guess I'm wondering about how it could be assessed in that rating system to see where it really falls and whether it we know that it's going into areas where it wasn't before. And I guess I don't know whether it has a detrimental effect at that point. I mean, it seems to, it's killing the moss.
Yeah, it got
It's taking over everything. I mean, I've got friends, it's taken over their lawns. You know, all their gardens, the ferns. I view, it's my personal opinion that that weed is worse than anything we have in Gerwood in terms of the amount that it has spread in the last 20 years.
Thank you, Jackie and Tim and Margaret. And I think we could also have a long discussion about this. But I like the suggestion, if we could follow that up sometime in the next year about reading that weed. Tim, but Joan, your hand is next. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to state that I am strongly opposed to the use of herbicides to poison and kill plants. I have a lot of concern for our environment and the health and safety of our children, our pets, the bees, the birds, and other wildlife. Our family's on well water, as are many other people in Gerwood, and I fear that poison in the groundwater is a danger to our health. Thanks for listening to my concerns. And I'd like to also ask a question about daisies. Last time the spraying happened, daisies were being targeted. Is that not so anymore?
Not, yeah, not in this work. We have sprayed daisies, so oxide daisies are are very invasive. So we have sprayed it in the past, we did work along the Aliaska Highway bike path. And the main target was in along the bike path was the orange hogweed, white sweet clover and bird vetch. But the results, there were daisies mixed in as well. But that species is very invasive. If you drive to the Kenai, once you hit that welcome to Kenai sign up to Turning and Pass and beyond, there's 30 miles of these invasive daisies that have taken over the roadside ditches. Yeah, along the Seward Highway, so that that is a very invasive species. But it's, it's, people planted that wildflower mixes, so called wildflower mixes, so that that is a widespread species, unfortunately.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Brett, you're next.
I'll get you after Brett.
Thank you for that. Just really quickly, I thought that I understood from Land Use meeting that you know, that there was more hand pulling and less spraying. But then I sort of picked up here that maybe the hand pulling doesn't work so well and that the focus might be on more herbicide application. Did I understand that right?
Between? Yeah. Yeah, so we've been doing a lot of hand pulling and weed whacking over the years. And that has helped maybe buy us a little bit of time. And I mentioned that it based that exponential growth curve. The herbicide work is what has has pushed the weeds much lower in Gerwood. And we, you know, we do, we do all the options and we do the hand pulling, we do weed whacking. You try to encourage prevention. But it's, it's the, the herbicide work is what has made the difference. Yeah, the hand pulling has slowed things down. So it's and it's, you know, it's, it's good education when we do, when we're able to volunteer weed pulls. But it's, it's not, it's kind of like treading water in very cold water. You're not going to make it forever. I mean, it's just, you know, buy you a little time, but.
Well, thank you for that. And I guess that then my follow up is based on that and recounting that it was your sort of internal policy to not apply these types of herbicides when it was raining because of the insolubility and potential for water transport. So I guess as a concerned citizen, my I guess my request would be to somehow have an accounting or do you give a report of some kind as to how much has been applied and when? And maybe even just to verify that, you know, that there's no rain on that day or something like that. Do we get a report in the end?
Yes, he turns in a report every year in the fall after activities or early winter. After activities are done for the year. Present that to GBOS.
Thank you. Thank you. And I guess then the detail is to understand if it was raining on the day of application. Because I, that's the one big area here where the risk lies. And there's sort of the unanswered question. It was applied, but is that in the report by any chance?
I think you addressed that the last meeting that you do not apply during rain days.
Yep.
It's kind of productive to what you're
Yeah, it's, there's, there's, there's a lot of levels of of regulation here. Both, you know, from the EPA and then the state DEC, where you can't spray during rainy weather. So it's so, yeah, so we don't spray when it's when it's raining, so.
Thank you, bound by regulation. Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
And Kyle, could you please mute the last person that asked a question to?
Oh, sorry, yes, I'll take care of that. And we do have one hand in the room.
Thanks, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ian Kaiser. I've been working on a lot of things at the basis myself. And I think the one that doesn't ever get approached in these situations, from what I've seen, is trying to introduce something that makes that one not want to grow. It's like you change the pH on it or you change something about it to the environment that that plant is growing in, no longer wants to grow in it. And it seems like to me that we're getting very selfish in our ways. Like every time you spray herbicide, it's taking out a little creature that really has a purpose in this world. And so like, the more of those that you get rid of, like, they can't come back and actually do anything in that soil when they're gone. You're taking away something that is God given to this earth. And so for part of me, I feel like it's, it'd be interesting, you're talking about the allopatics. Like those, an allopatic is a plant that actually deters anything from growing around it. A lot of trees do that. So why not plant some, something in addition to that would, that would take that out as opposed to trying to put down an herbicide, which has a long term effect for not just our own selves, but for all the people a hundred years from now, whoever comes into this area. They're taking out these creatures, like in Florida as an example, there's so many places that have used herbicides historically, that it's it's deterred the ability to do anything but to keep using herbicides because there's nothing to, there's nothing else to do. It's been different than putting down fertilizers in a farm field where you keep feeding that farm the same thing. You have to keep feeding because there's nothing else there to provide the little creatures that were naturally there to be able to provide the nutrition for the plants and for all the other little ecosystems that exist. So I feel like we need to be thinking about the future and thinking about other ways to provide the ability to eliminate plants that's natural. And just in my own experience, if you drive down the entire every single edge on our properties is dandelions and, you know, all of these things. And it's because they only grow in a certain type of soil. And so if we change up the soil, they no longer grow. And on the project that I've been working on, which is on Timberline, my front end, she has nothing on it any longer. And it took me a while to get that to happen, but they're not coming back. And so I just want to throw that out there to the whole board or anyone to put a little, you know, to figuring out a way to do something natural in those areas. And see what kind of results we come with, with what you're doing with something in a natural way and a long term effect. So it's about pH, which I think needs to be changed. So I just want to help that issue.
Yeah, I'm always open to trying new things and say, hey, this you know, whatever, yeah. Try this and try that, or I did this and this was a result, so. Thanks.
I think it'd be an interesting test, you know, just to take a hawk weed and you know, throw down, I don't know, seaweed on it, just throw something down on it that that could actually deter it from wanting to be there anymore. And I know a lot of this like the hawk weed, I know it's a problem in my own yard. But I think just for the future. There, every single thing has an alternate. I think that as a plant, in almost any situation, there is something to counteract something in this world. And so how do you help in experiencing anything other herbicide?
Yeah, well, you have a hand pulling, tarping, mowing. Yeah, we, yeah, we tried to crowd out reed canary grass on a project in Anchorage. And the, yeah, the reed canary grass crowded out the other species that we were trying to
Crowded out mowing plants too. It's that it was like the strongest species would win, like you'd put a tree in here with an allopatic root, like that would definitely take care of something, just plant a tree in here. And two, it would have my grass puncher or something, but that plant doesn't want to grow more in there. So, I mean like, isn't there a real scheme in some places?
That's, that is something I'd like to try, but it would be pretty similar to mowing because it would, it would top kill plants. So it would temporarily kill things, but they'd still be able to come back from the roots. So it's
You just have to reduce down to killing these creatures.
Because it wouldn't, yeah, it's sterilized.
I want to take the open vetch, but I don't want to kill it down there, but you have a whole experiment about. Well, one of the things that there's, my friend, she had this, that like, they're telling you something in their soil. The vetch is an hydrogen fixer, they, you throw something down and it's
Okay, so whoever's speaking next, could they please raise their hand? And then if the board has something or Tim has something next, please go next.
I haven't.
Guys, got a question.
Yeah, I guess I'll kind of follow up on what Brett was saying about avoiding during rain. I did notice in the limited research I did for the the milestone, the amino phytolid chemical, one of the concerns with EPA is drift must, however, come down to your office. Thank you. Also dispersed from airplanes and everything else in the lower 48. But so do you take into consideration high winds, you know, when you're spraying and drift as you're applying this? So you can be more concentrated in your attack?
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're using a backpack with a hand wand that's about a foot off the ground. So we're, you know, we're spraying right, right near the ground surface. And in general, there, yeah, there's a, you can't spray in over seven miles an hour of wind. So yeah, so we're applying it very directly. We don't, we want it to go right on the target plants. Because we only want to kill those plants and not, we want everything else to be able to fill back in. So.
Yeah, I think EPA mandated four feet or less. So.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks, Guy. Are there any other comments? Mike?
Brianna, may I just give insight on what's happened at Land Use and where we're at today? So Land Use voted against using pesticide spray for this coming year. And so before the board is that recommendation from Land Use. What we're looking for is direction from GBOS as to the funding that we do have available and how to spend that for 2023 for this year. And what actions the community wants to do within MOA lands for invasive weeds this year. So most likely, the only option we would have, we're not using a pesticide, would be hand pulling. And then most likely, we would probably may have a discussion about the thistle. But the other, the other patch of hawkweed. And we pretty much be focusing on bird vetch this year. And we would try to stretch that $5,000 as fast as far as you can go. But though, you know, once you go to a hand pull, the labor and time becomes very intensive. So we would only probably work a small area, having to choose between Hightower Road and Olympic Mountain Loop or just splitting efforts in those two areas to tackle the bird vetch in those locations. So that's what's before the board today. We're looking for guidance on how we spend. And we only have $5,000 associated with this. And we've been making these presentations for the last 12 years as we've come in here. And we've been working with Tim for the last eight on this. And so it's at the direction of the Parks Director that we get community approval, neighborhood approval essentially to do the spraying. And if we don't, then we look at other ways to tackle it. So, so most likely, if we do not do the spraying, then we'll just focus on bird vetch and see how far we can get with labor on that.
Thanks, Kyle, for redirecting us.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, I think it might be just a slightly bit more complicated because the land use discussion seemed to really hinge on glyphosate. So I'm not, I wasn't clear from the land use discussion on whether it was like, was going to object to the milestone as well. And so it occurs to me that one possibility, I know that we're now dragging on through the summer, but one possibility is to go back to land use and, you know, ask what about, what about this other proposal now that, so we've cut it back a year. Only asking for, or your ask, excuse me, is for a one year approval. And then the glyphosate is something that, Tim, excuse me if I'm wrong, but you weren't really sure you were going to need anyway. So that's been taken out. And that, by far the most of the testimony I heard at Land Use was concerned about glyphosate. But I'm not, it might have drowned out the other conversation. So one possibility is, you know, rather than us necessarily ruling land use is rather just sending this back and saying it's a little different now than you think. So I guess I see a couple of options, like obviously it is an option that GBOS decides something completely different. Or GBOS can also pre-approve this and, and say, look, if Land Use says this, okay, then we're okay. Or we can say, we agree with Land Use 100% and we're going to knock this whole thing out regardless of whether or not includes glyphosate. So is that, is that a fair summation of where we're at? And if anybody disagrees with me on that?
Thanks, Jennifer. Any other board?
Guy and Mike.
Yeah, can I ask for staff clarification on this? Is the, is the request, is it about parks and rec and roads? And a request like the fire, like the truck is about how we spend money? Or is it the, or is it a sort of more of a community council type consultation request? Because I'm not clear which.
Community council consultation.
Okay. It's not, it's not something within parks and rec power or roads power?
No, I mean, it is in the sense that approving the funding to be that way is definitely within the power. So there's two aspects to it is it's the Parks Department wanting to reach out directly to the communities to get their input about this method. And then two, if you are a service area like community councils aren't, you do have the power of the checkbook and you could say, no, we don't want to fund money going towards that aspect.
Okay, right. So it's both.
Yes.
Thanks. I wasn't clear about that, Land Use.
Thanks, Mike.
I guess my comment or just follow up with Jennifer. That's kind of what I gathered too during the Land Use meeting was, was to, and the lesser two eagles wasn't really addressed. It was glyphosate that was addressed, you know? So that's kind of what I got from that meeting as well.
Can I get, can I just ask Tim? Is that okay?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to understand what's in front of us now. So you're suggesting Milestone could be used this year and you could use that and you wouldn't have any intention if you think quite terrible, kind of, quite to say. Is that the proposal we have in front of us now? Or is it that you would just do the hand pulling and mechanical control this year?
I think, yeah, the updated proposal would be just for one year, but yeah, use a milestone on the hawkweed and bird vetch.
Okay. At this meeting.
Thank you, everyone. Are there any other board comments? And I also was at, I'll keep going. I was at Land Use as well online. And it seems like what we could do to keep this moving forward without delay, not that it's super time sensitive, but summer apparently just arrived. And if we do the approach of Milestone on these three top areas for the bird vetch, then glyphosate will most likely not be needed. And if that takes up the labor hours and the funds that are approved, it goes to us to do a letter of non objection. And it's only slightly altered when it goes potentially back to Land Use. And if they then agree with that letter of non objection, that's lovely because it's just altered slightly. I feel comfortable with that idea. And if anyone wants to put all of our ideas together with the motion, we could move forward or, or move forward in another way.
I'll move for what you just said, Brianna. So we, a letter of non objection to, to use Milestone only for one, for one year.
Let's, let's finish the motion.
We need a second?
I'll say, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, we definitely have a second. Any further discussion?
We have a question in the room too from the public.
Okay, question. Please come close to the mic or audible.
Hi, this is Ian Kaiser again. I just wondered what the active ingredient is in Milestone.
It's called amino pyrolyte. Amino pyrolyte.
No other questions?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Kyle, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
That motion passes 4-0.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Tim, again for coming back. And Margaret, do you have anything in closing for follow up?
I'm looking for directions since this is not exactly in alignment with what LUC proposed. Would it be, you're thinking that this loan would go to Land Use to approve? So it would be a conditional letter of non objection pending Land Use approval?
That sounds, Jennifer, does that sound?
That's what I understood it to be, but maybe. I understood that we were not trying to overrule Land Use. We're trying to send back something that might be a compromise.
Correct. I think if they don't agree, then we'll come back to you and say, we're just going to do hand pulls.
Oh, thank you. I wouldn't personally want anyone hand pulling for work. Anything else? Is that, thanks, Margaret, for saying that clearly. All right. Go back to the agenda here for number 13. Girdwood Fire Department requests for resolution of support to purchase of a new pumper truck at 1.152 funded through Girdwood Fire 406 account and government loan.
You go first.
Sure.
You talk.
Hello, Michelle Weston, Fire Chief. We have a proposal to purchase, replace engine 41, which has reached end of life. Technically, by N F P A standards, should not be a frontline apparatus or even an apparatus in service at the moment, but it is. And we've got, I think the community's got a good 20 plus years out of that apparatus. And that's our frontline rig for any structure fires in Girdwood. And so to replace it will cost $1,151,531. That includes $150,000 budgeted for radios, other equipment that's needed to make it operational. The, and that would be a good price because we would be getting it at the same time as if we'd be doing a bulk order of engines. And so we would tack what ours on and that would hopefully bring us a savings of multiple tens of thousands of dollars. Current apparatus time for delivery is about 425 days from ordering. So we wouldn't see it until, let's say, December of, if we ordered it now, like in this next month, we wouldn't see it until December or January of the following year. Any questions?
I'll talk a little bit about the numbers so we can understand where it's going on here. Basically, this price includes a 15% contingency in it for the unknowns, especially as you're developing it. And then also the additional equipment that will be needed from radios to computer equipment and change orders as you go into it. So we definitely padded it a little bit there so that we know we don't have to come back and ask for additional money later. Because there's always changes as you go. They make this a little bit bigger for you though, online.
Just to, just to add to that, traditionally, there's two ways to purchase apparatus. You can either design the spec yourself and work on a custom spec or you can buy a, use one spec. And so for this one, we're using Anchorage Fire Department spec. So all of them will be the same. That should prevent opportunities of value, well, value in the future when we have to repair them. So.
And that's, that point is really good because we are joining in with the Anchorage Fire Department. That's buying five of these of their own. So we're going to be the sixth engine, which helps us with discount because of the bulk order. Currently, right now, the Girdwood Fire capital count, we haven't made the contribution yet, but we will move over money this year, $74,000. That'll bring the account to $496,000. We propose using a 30% down payment, which will be $351,000, a little bit more there. And then we'll finance about $800,000. Currently, right now, we're seeing 5.5% interest rates for a 10 year loan. That won't be locked in until we actually secure the loan, but that's sort of the range that we're at. And so that would turn into quarterly payments of just over $26,000, which would be an annual payment, just over $104,000, which we would just add into the Girdwood Fire Department's operating budget. We had already started to put money aside for this, which we've been sliding over to capital because we haven't got to this point yet. So we would probably need to increase that number a little bit in our operating budget to cover these payments each, each quarter through that. If financed over 10 years, it would be $245,000 in interest that we pay. But there is no really prepayment penalty to pay it off early. So if we get to a point where we're like, let's get this thing paid off, we can make the decision to pay it off and get it done early, like any sort of car loan there. So. But the way that would leave is $144,000 in the capital count after this. And then we would still have the annual contributions that would go forward to keep up with other things, particularly the need for hose and turnouts and all these things that are sort of annual or biannual expenses that need to be replaced. And then, as I said here, currently the operating budget right now has 80,000 K budgeted for loan payments. The budget line will need to be increased in 24 to, you know, $24,000 to 104. Basically, almost one quarterly payment there has to be added in. And we'd have to set that for the next 10 years or if we pay it off early. So. And the interest rates won't be locked in until we actually lock in the loan. We are working with finance and they do this pretty often with vehicle purchases and different things. And so this works really well for us as the service area. Whereas the municipality, Anchorage Fire Department, I don't know if they bonded or they may bond or they, they did bond, they did bond for this. So they're using bonds to do this. This is like a bond almost, but we're doing it for the service area, which works out really well. They do a lot of this for fleet in town. So, so that's kind of a rundown of the numbers a lot there. But we're looking for the support of the board to move forward with this purchase. And you'll probably hear more about it as we get into annual budgets as well. So, so we'll see that line item show up depending on what happens.
Thank you, Kyle and Chief Weston. Questions from the board or comments? Or motion?
Yeah, question. So if hypothetically, if this was going to be a, if we could do this in the future as a bond, would we be, would this interest rate be basically the same?
Essentially, yes.
I just note with an interest that, excuse the pun, that Chuguet Eagle River bonded for a fire apparatus in April election. And it passed and everywhere in Chuguet Eagle River voted for it. I think Girdwood actually voted for it, 73%, but it passed like 60 to 60 to 40. So these things can happen.
They're not, they're not moving forward.
I know they're not moving forward, but there was a.
Yeah, they actually passed, which was huge.
Nearly every three or four.
And it was the first time they've actually bonded for anything.
I think only three or four, three, six didn't vote for it. But so, I mean, it's, it's still a possibility we could consider. But it doesn't seem like it's actually that beneficial. If we can, if we can basically fund it to the same, you know, if the cost is the same, we can do it as a, as a separate loan or as a, as a bond, there's probably no benefit in doing it as a bond.
No, and I think this, this aspect gives us more flexibility to join in with AFD when they are buying it and we become a bulk order. You know, we know that we can jump in on these purchases and get things done that way. Sometimes coordinating, sometimes coordinating the two fire service areas can be really difficult because who knows what's going on at times and all of a sudden things appear and you're like, well, wish we had known about that, you know? And so it's nice that these things come along and we have the flexibility. You know, the thing about the AFD is that it's among us service areas. So they don't really have a fire board that they go and say, hey, here's what we want to do. Whereas here, Girdwood has the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and a, and a public discourse that can lead to approvals this way. So.
Any others?
I don't, I don't know if I have a, maybe it's a question. This, this is obviously an increased cost, an annual cost for fire. And we have some other needs within fire for increased costs. So I'm wondering the extent to which when we pass this, we're automatically blocking other. I don't know if that's a question you can answer.
I could say that I've already gone through and looked at what, you know, sort of replacement schedule, right? Because we have done a lot of replacing of things just because a lot of things were reaching end of life, service life. And so for this, at least for this next year, I already know what the hose order is. That's up on the agenda. I know what P P U we're going to get. We do have to replace the gas detectors. I'm getting a quote on, I got a, they met with us today. So I've got a quote, getting a quote on that. But there isn't, and you know, hopefully now I say this, we're not going to, we need to replace the mud rescue tools this year. It's next year. But other than that, there isn't any big other item. Knock on wood. Hopefully we don't break something, right? There isn't another big item coming up in this, at least in this next year that I know of. I'm anticipating, you know, that I can anticipate. So I think that's a good, I think that's good, right? I think we're, you know, we're sort of ahead of, we're in much better spot than where we were. And I'm also going to ask for an area wide EMS increase next year. So.
But especially within the fire service area, I think we're catching up. But especially within the fire service area, I think we're catching up with Engine 41, which is your primary concern is a, is a fire service area. You know, like rescue equipment, things outside, that's outside of the fire service area.
Yeah, but we're, you know, we're, we're finally, it wasn't, this year going through the, you know, look at perspective of looking for, what are we going to have to replace next year? Where are we? We were in a much better spot when we discussed it, Deputy Chief Garhart and I, than we have been, right? Like finally, I feel like we're fine. I say this optimistically, but we finally, you know, fully catastrophic happens. We're, we're getting up to, thank you, which is all your support, really. We've gotten up to, taken five years, but we're right now where we should have, you know, right now at a good spot, so.
But Jennifer, to your point, this will be an increase on the operating budget for fire. And we've had increases the last couple of years, so this will be, you know, what I put in here, this would be $26,000 increase for that, that line item. So, yeah, it could lead to discussions about other parts of the budget as well.
I'm sorry, can you remind me of the number? I missed, I didn't write down the number of years.
10 years, right now we have it scheduled for. That's the maximum limit of the loan, so it's like a car loan. But like I said, you can pay it off early if you want to.
And its lifespan should be 15 years.
Correct.
So you should get five years of service out of it. Hopefully, we're fully paid.
Is that normal, 15 years of all the lifespan on that?
Yeah, per frontline apparatus. Then you put it in reserve, in, in theory, then it's supposed to move into reserve status. At 20 years, they're not supposed to be responding.
We're 20, how many years is it now for that engine?
About a 99 or something, so yeah, because when that went in, that went in, the rescue one came in about the same time, if I remember, when I was here before. So it's going to be, you know, when it, we're ordering it, but then we still have another year on top of it before it comes, so. And unfortunately, the price has gone up significantly, like they used to be 800,000, which still seemed amazingly expensive to me. But now, the middle of March, you know, it used to be 20 years ago when I was ordering, when I was doing the bonding for A F D. Later company, later truck is over a million. But now, now post-COVID, that's what the cost, the engine companies are also.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and thanks for those questions. What is the will of the body on this resolution?
I'll move, I'll move the resolution.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to thank you and, and mention that I did try and write a grant for this, but was unsuccessful, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief Weston. And thanks for having me look at the resolution and talk to you about it too. So Kyle, if there's nothing else, could you do a roll call, please?
Actually, I do have a, I do have one thing I'd like to discuss. Very briefly, very briefly. I know the comment about the, the interest rate of 5.5 being sort of nominal and it could change. I'm wondering if the board would be interested in just putting in a one statement saying, you know, a kind of an N T E statement that, you know, if we discover that the interest rate's actually eight and a half percent, that might change our calculus. So although this, these numbers are based on 5.5, if, if the interest rate is a significantly increase, we should revisit. So we give the, we give the approval up to some nominal number. I don't think.
May I have a second on that?
So I'd say I'm, I'll throw out number 6%, so as long as the interest is 6% below.
Could we have a second to discuss it?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thank you, Mike, for that allowance there and foresight for the future because not all of us will be looking at these in the same capacity. So if, if that sounds reasonable to everyone else or Chief Weston or Kyle has any comments about that.
When would we be actually finalizing the, the finances? Is that when we place the order or is that?
Oh, once we get assembly approval.
Okay.
So I wouldn't know, and so the assembly would approve us going and getting the loan. And then at that point, what the market is allowing for interest rates, lock in at that interest rate. Knowing that there could be variables between now and then, if we do find, if we do.
You know what then is, do we?
Yeah, we go to lock in and we find out it's above 6, we have to come back to you to get approval, make sure you're comfortable with that. I think the assembly is going to give a blanket approval without a, a, the way I understand it though, is say you get the interest rate at, at that time.
I'm just trying to think, calculation wise, I can't, can't quite do this compound interest work in my head, but nearly. I'd say rather 6%, 6.5% is probably better. Where we should, where I'd suggest putting a additional interest rate being 6.5.
So would you say that you're amending your original motion to say approval of resolution with 6.5 being not to exceed for interest rate?
That's what I'm proposing as a bit.
Okay, as amended, okay.
And. I'll second that. If it needs a second, I'll second that.
Thanks for the formality there, Jennifer. I appreciate it and clarifying. So would we, would that be in the?
It's amendment to the original motion, so we'd be voting on the amendment.
Would that be in the fifth whereas, or do we not need to put that in there yet for discussion? Somewhere in there. And then we might need a motion to extend if we don't, if I will right now ask for a vote on the amendment. If everyone's ready.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I guess my question falls under just me attending as public, but the issue is that the apparatus that's currently in use is out of date and out of its lifespan, so what's going to be the answer if interest rates do pop up?
It would be a, it would be potentially a retail, a change in the way we pay for it. Maybe we'd want to put more down, maybe, I, there are various options.
I understand that.
Yes, I mean specifically, I think we would add a whereas or within the last whereas, we would just put in the loan at an interest rate not to exceed 6.5% or whatever, to be confirmed, but not exceeding 6.5.
May I have a motion to extend 10 P M?
Yeah, move to extend. Beyond 10, yeah, to 10:30.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Guy. Any objections? Okay, continue. Maybe we could be before 10:30. Let's keep going. Where were we? Thank you. Thanks for that in the additional whereas you're saying.
Sorry, not quite, not additional whereas, in the, in the last whereas, we would add one phrase after the last comma. So total price of replacement, then you put 41, et cetera, at an interest rate to be confirmed at the time of purchase of the loan, but not to exceed 6.5%. Repay it, of course, in 10 years. It just means we have to revisit if it's, if it turns out to be above 6.5.
Copy, Margaret?
Yes.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, Kyle, could we have a roll call for the amendment?
Sure, Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Guy, Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Guy Wade.
Yes.
Motion, amendment passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. And then back to the main motion, right?
Yes.
I always get so confused with that. Okay, anything on that? Anyone else to add? I appreciate the discussion here too and clarification, Margaret. Could we have a roll call for the original, Kyle?
Yes, Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Guy Wade.
Yes.
Motion as amended passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to number 14 on the agenda. This is the land acknowledgement. I don't mind postponing this to the next meeting, but I could just quickly refresh that this was added to our agenda as a suggestion by a supervisor. And the land acknowledgement from Land Use is available on their website in minutes. And we could either decide really quickly that we would like this on the next agenda and someone from our body proposes a new one, or we kind of reuse what Land Use is using. If we have any suggestions from anyone right now, I'm open to those.
Can I suggest we, we move this discussion to next month?
Yes. Okay, any other suggestions?
Well, I may formally move to, move to postpone till next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any objections? Okay, we'll go by a cent with that. Number 15, consider support for proposal to update Girdwood Transportation Plan. And this was under new business at Land Use, so we don't need to, that's not why, but we don't need to act on this tonight as it was new business, but it's up here on old. Any comments from the board on this?
Is Mark online?
Uh, no, Mark is not here.
I would done, I would do the same then, propose moving, but move this to postpone until July.
Okay, thanks, Mike. He was formal, so does anyone want to be formal with a second?
Oh, a second.
Thanks. Any objections? Okay, we'll see that on July.
Can we reach out to Mark to be here for that?
Yes.
I know that was very helpful and maybe even move it up higher, so you didn't have to wait until the very, very end of the meeting.
Okay. That'd be great.
That would be helpful because he, yeah, he did have a long waitlist.
He did. Thank you all for that. Oh, we're not to new business yet because 16 was the Girdwood Cemetery request for G B O S resolution of support. So the S version was released for the meeting tomorrow night. And Tommy's not here to speak to it, but we have a draft of a resolution to clarify the intent, the G V S A intent. I don't know that it's in the packet, but all we'd have to do is vote on that tonight so that it could be hopefully sent tomorrow. And Margaret, you're welcome to clarify.
Can I make a comment? I'm going to follow a similar pattern before. I think one of the reasons this came up is it wasn't clear if the, our, what we intended to do with the service area power mattered when it came to the resolution of the, sorry, the ordinance the assembly is looking at tomorrow. It turns out it doesn't matter, so I don't believe this is time critical now. And my suggestion would be we do not make this change yet. We wait until later on in the year when it's, well, when basically it's, the situation is settled more and we're moving towards the bond issue and then make a decision then. I don't think we need to clarify this as by not standing. So I guess the reason I'd also propose to, you know, postpone this to August.
Guy, do you have anything?
Yes, I just a question. How do you know this or what makes you think that?
Just based on the, the information I got from the, the assembly members from, from Zach and Bradley.
Okay.
So we hadn't seen the S version until Friday. And the S version doesn't address the service area power, it only talks about where, it only talks about the situation of cemetery powers with the city service area. That was the point it was trying to clarify.
So in support of tomorrow night's S version, that's at the very, right now at the end of their agenda, would it, would, in your opinion, it wouldn't behoove us to get this to any further than where it is now before tomorrow?
That's my understanding, that's my understanding as what previously passed this fight.
I'm indifferent. Guy?
I guess the only advantage of not doing it, since we've already have it written, is we could spend a little more time on when we want to relinquish that power and you know, what would be the disadvantage of smearing it?
Because there is actually a mechanism for, there isn't a clear mechanism for relinquishing these powers. There's a mechanism to, to abolish service areas, but we have multiple powers within exactly the same service area. Or there are multiple service areas superimposing each other, I'm not sure how to think about it. So it's slightly different from the way the code is written, so it may, it isn't quite clear what we should, how we need to go about this. But it turns out it's not time critical.
So to keep things formal, can I second your motion to postpone this?
You can. Thank you, Jennifer. We're getting, we're getting better. Okay. Well, I don't really have anything else. And I agree that this wouldn't hurt to let marinate then. Thanks, Margaret, for working on this also. And Guy? Any objections? Carrying none, we'll go to new business. Oh, number 17, discuss agenda topics for the M O A G B O S quarterly meeting. And if, so I think Brent Karst is still online if we want to, anyone wants to move 18 up to honor the time he's been waiting, even though I just announced 17.
We could probably get to do this pretty quick because it's just new business and you guys will really tune in on this next month.
Got it.
One interview is what was discussed at your last quarterly meeting. And then for the board to consider what they would like to discuss at the next meeting. If you have anything now you want us to put on there, let us know. If not, we can confirm things.
So can I just make one comment about that, that I assume we were, we've already agreed we're adding, or I think we're adding on the things from five under old business, one way or the other. We're not, not sure yet who we're going to be talking to, but assuming that we don't get answers between now and then, we'll add this.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Kyle, for this.
You're having a hand up.
I was going to suggest that perhaps you'll be wanting to talk to the muni about State of Alaska land at the airport.
Yes, yes, a plummy question.
Appropriate, yes. And you have a nice way of organizing the order as well, so I'm sure you'll fit in the order. Any other comments? Okay, be sure to review this before too many days go by. All right, thanks, Kyle. Okay, I'm not, I thought I was muted for a second. Okay, we're going to number 18. Agenda item L U C 2306 dash 07, Herbal Cash requests for recommendation of non-objection for license renewal.
I'll state to this and I'll let Brent talk there, but this is now becoming more standard, like our alcohol licenses where we'll get these requests for renewal. They are moving to a two-year renewal period, like alcohol licenses. And so typically, we have the petitioners here for alcohol licenses, but for marijuana, we'll continue to invite Brent to give us a presentation, give us an update on how the business is going too at the same time. So, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Kyle. Yeah, my name's Brent Karst. I'm the owner of the Herbal Cash. For kind of a quick little update, you know, this last year we had a great business year and we didn't really have any significant changes and we kind of don't really foresee any kind of significant changes coming here anytime soon. And we're coming up in our fourth year, so happy to be here. At the Land Use Committee, we got a question if we had any negative feedback over the last year. And I'm actually really happy to say we have, I've never gotten any negative feedback over the last four years. So just happy to be here in the community. Negative feedback over the last four years. So just happy to be here in the community. And yeah, like Kyle said, I guess this is changing to every two years. So I won't be in front of you guys until. Twenty twenty five next year. That's about all I have. If you guys have any questions for me and have any answer, anything?
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for waiting that long.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, we appreciate your patience, Brent.
Thank you for extending for me.
All right, I don't see or hear any, but interrupt me if you have anything else. But that is new business, so. We'll be looking forward to that in July. Objection. So nineteen, G F R request for not to exceed fourteen thousand from the Girdwood Fire and Rescue four oh six account. For replacement of hose in twenty three and twenty four. Chief Weston, would you like to introduce?
Hi there, Shaw Weston Fire Chief. We have a need to replace our three inch hose. We hose test every year. A certain number fails. We have to maintain enough hose to have, be on the apparatus, but then also to have spare so that if. We come back, we wash hose, we hang it, that we put fresh hose on the apparatus to put it back in service. So our anticipated need is for seven hundred feet of three inch hose. This year, and then for next year, we're already anticipating we're going to need a thousand feet of three inch and two hundred and fifty of large diameter hose, which is five inch. That's the big supply hose that comes off the hydrant. So in, in to try and keep everything tight together, I thought I'd ask for one. The two thousand twenty four and two thousand twenty three approvals, so to just keep it all together. I also already know what the two thousand twenty four P P E request is also going to be. So we have that already drafted, ready to go, but we'll wait on that. Later.
Great. Anything for Chief Weston? I don't see or hear any, so we'll go to number twenty.
Sorry, I've got one last thing.
Go back to nineteen.
I don't know if, in general, the municipality can't commit to future spending in future years from future budgets. I don't know if that applies to here or not, because we're, we're kind of committing to. We're committing to, we're not necessarily committing to spending the money this year. We're committing to allocating it, allocating it now, but it may not actually get used. Next year, which is slightly different, but. That might just be something we need to just confirm before we go ahead with this next month.
Well, as service area board, you do commit to fiscal budgets within a current year for the next year. We, she's almost making like a count. She could wait and just make.
Right, but we.
Requested with.
We would be making a request during the budget process for that.
You could do it if you wanted to. We could delay it till the budget process to do it, so that, you know.
But I'd still have to come back with a resolution, right? Yes. Because we have, because we, because we have.
The budgets, I mean, operational budgets are approved by the, usually within. Always within this year. So a capital purchase program could be established and then. Special request down the road could come back for consideration.
I mean, I would be quite happy to bring in one resolution with the various anticipated capital purchase needs. For one resolution, but it'll be, you know, it'll have P P E and hose. And then that way, I think that would be more efficient than.
Make sure we're not doing something that causes problems further down the road.
No, but it's something to think about, and we can talk about it further next month. And we'll think about that. So we're going to be starting budgets pretty soon.
Yes, Chief Weston is definitely doing budgets. Frequently already. Anything else? Okay, do we want to go to, oh, twenty?
Sorry, sorry.
Rhetorical question. GBOS review comments on H L B twenty twenty three work plan and five year management plan. We did that. Draft resolutions generated from discussion about H L B one and five year plans. We did mention this at our last H L B planning commenting meeting.
Yeah, I noticed that the, there is in the packet for Thursday's H L B A C meeting. There is a table that H L B have produced, which has responses to all the public comments. It looks like that was published on Friday. I didn't notice it until just before this meeting. So there are at least responses to the comments, so we could perhaps review those before our next, next meeting. I have not reviewed them yet.
Oh, thank you, Mike. Okay, I did not know that yet either.
And obviously, that will be discussed and come up on Thursday. And then we've already, we've already talked about the industrial park resolution, having, having that on the agenda next month.
Right. Any other comments about this for now? Hearing none, we'll go to number twenty one, which is discuss GBOS goals for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four.
I think we put this, I think we put this on here just to see if the board wanted to set some goals. Likely probably help staff to help plan and calendar that out to accomplish. For the rest of this year, or especially now that people are. Taking on new assignments. So we put that on there. If you'd like to talk with us individually about goals and the realistic. In the next. Fifteen months or so, we discuss that and have that ready for the next meeting.
Thanks, Kyle. And I, I probably. Realize that a few of us do have a small list going or things we've thought about, so we could take that on as a task to come in and speak with staff. Or. Come up with another idea like postpone this or throw out some ideas right now. What's the will of the body?
I don't want to add, what are maybe, should this be a work session or is it? Rate that.
I think a work session would be good at one point, you know, maybe after we have a list or to start. I'm open. Kyle, what are you going to say?
I suggest maybe talking with us individually and especially with the areas that you're responsible for. Maybe we can just have a discussion about it and then, because some things will not require staff time and others will require. Maybe more of the supervisor time in that aspect. So if you want to do that, that's fine. If you want to create a work session, we're trying to avoid creating a new meeting for you as they load up already in the middle of summer. So. So whatever we can do to, whatever's the most productive route will make it work.
What I've suggested is basically we just said, we, we bring you. Staff's job would be to compile the list from us as individual supervisors. And then we bring that, we bring that in front of us at the next meeting. And if we decide there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had. You know, so prioritizing much of ourselves and coming through the single list, then we can schedule a work session. Otherwise, we might just be happy to approve it. July. Okay, let's go with that.
Sounds good. Great. Any other feedback from the board? All right, I'll let staff say anything about anything further after twenty one.
Sorry, Brianna, can I just say one more thing about the goals? We haven't, we haven't done this for, for many years, but I think it's a. There is this tendency, we tend to be a bit reactive sometimes and not quite forward, not deliberate enough about forward thinking. So I like, I like this idea as a way to kind of set, you know, set, set our own targets at the beginning of the year and then. As we're going through the year, we can look at them, see if we met them or not, or see how much has changed.
Thank you, Mike. Good to remind us to. Okay. Staff on number twenty two, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think it's in the packet tonight. There's just additional material there. So if you'd like to. Take a look at all that in there, it's in there.
Great. Thanks for putting it together and putting the. Parks at the top. So tis the season. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Jennifer. I'll second, someone second. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.